Alrighty, I have 5:30, so we will call the meeting to order. If I could have everybody join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, first, first I'd like to say thank you to our panel and our community members who are here with us, as well as those who are online watching. We appreciate your support in this process. So tonight, we will be finishing our preliminary superintendent interviews. We will be conducting three of those tonight. Quick housekeeping, just so everybody knows, Dr. Miller is on call, so if he steps away briefly, it's to answer one of those calls and he'll be right back, so no panic if he pops up and walks off for a second. And then a quick reminder to the board, please make sure when you're asking your questions or your follow-ups, make sure you get close to the mic, so everybody can hear what we're saying and what we're asking, and we will get started, so.
Thank you for coming. It's my pleasure to be here.
Great, we appreciate you coming and being out here tonight. Dr. Lewis, Louis, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make sure. So we've set aside the next forty-five to fifty minutes to conduct this interview. We will each take turns asking questions, round robin style. I am asking the board to hold questions until the end, if there are anything that they would like to follow up on. If we have time, I'll allow them to follow up with those questions. So first, we'll just quickly start with introductions. The board will go through it, we'll introduce ourselves, and then we'll ask that you take a few minutes, just tell us about yourself and some of your experience, and then why you chose to apply for the Kentuck School District Superintendent position, then we'll jump right into the interview. Alright, awesome. So I'm Gabe Galbraith, I'm the Board President.
Micah Valentine, the Vice President.
And I'm Brittany Gladhill, and I'm our Legislative Representative.
I'm Josh Miller. Again, I apologize if I slip out, I'll be right back.
You're only saving lives, it's fine.
And I'm Michael Connors.
Good evening again to the board and to all of the observers and staff that are here, both in person and online. I am Davion Lois. It is a pleasure to be here with you all this evening. I am so grateful for the opportunity. So a little bit about myself, I am a first-generation immigrant. I was born in Jamaica, and I've now lived in three different countries, eight different states, so Jamaica, England, and the United States. And I'm currently in South Bend, Indiana, where I am the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. The district has a little over fifteen thousand students. I have a very diverse background, and so having lived all of those places, I bring a global perspective to the work. And one of the things I know to be true is that regardless of country or state, all parents want the same things for their kiddos, for them to be safe, for them to be loved and nurtured and cared for, and for them to have opportunities that they themselves didn't have. And so that's kind of the lens and perspective that I bring to this work, which is a privilege. It's a privilege to be able to have the kind of impact that you have as an educator. And I think about, you know, Ms. Ford, who I taught her son high school last in 2011, and to this day, every Christmas and New Year's, I still get a text message from her. And Brandon went into the Navy and now has kids, although I still think he's too young to have kids, but that's a different subject. But she updates me every single Christmas, and that's the impact that you can have as an educator. And so that's why I'm here, and I would hope to have that same impact here at Kennewick.
Great. And quickly, also, what led you to apply for this?
So I'll start with the personal side. Kennewick is somewhere that I could see myself living for the long term and laying roots. It goes without saying, congratulations on being one of the top one hundred cities to live. I was just sharing with Bill and Kevin back there that I was already looking up the PC and the CBRC. I'm a big tennis player, so I had to find out what the tennis courts were already. And I'm a big foodie, so the first thing I did when I landed last night was to look at DoorDash to see your menu of restaurants. And I had a great breakfast burrito this morning from, is it Angel Cafe? I think it was a pretty good breakfast burrito. And so the diversity, the size of the city, the industry, the charm are all things that are appealing to me. You know, I have lived in LA and New York and Atlanta, and I have to say, I don't miss the noise, and I certainly don't miss the traffic. I love where I am in South Bend. There is the St. Joseph River, and here you have the Columbia and the Yakima. And so having a natural body of water wherever I live is something that's important to me. In terms of the district, there are some great things happening in the district. You have some great staff, and congratulations to Ms. Kern, who won an award recently for innovation, and I'm going to mess up her name, Ms. Rajita Gavkuta, who won an award for science and math excellence in teaching. So you guys have some great things happening here. Your strategic plan is very comprehensive, your portrait of a student in terms of the things that you want, and the fact that you're tracking data towards all of those things, you know. Our schools are the heart of our community, is something said by Dr. Pierce, and she's a hundred percent right about that. Education is the great equalizer. I am the product of a great education, and I'd love to be able to continue to build on that legacy that's already here in place at Kennewick. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, great. Thank you very much. Alright, so we'll get started.
It's my volume, okay?
Yeah, yeah, we, yep, okay, perfect. So we'll get started, and of course, I'll time-keep as it comes back around to me, make sure we're still tracking on time, so. Alright, so we'll start with the first question. So what do you think is the most important quality of a leader? And describe for us your leadership style that you would bring to our districts.
Yeah, so I think a great superintendent is someone who is a visionary, someone who has the ability to effectively articulate, communicate that vision, and then build a coalition of teachers, staff, community members around that vision, and then drive folks towards achieving that mission. A great superintendent is someone who is a consummate professional, who models the behaviors that we expect for our kiddos, is someone who is innovative, bold, courageous, someone who is transparent, who does not shy away from accountability, and is a person of integrity. And by that, I mean doing the right thing even when no one is looking. And when I think about the feedback that I get from the people that I work with, those are all attributes that they describe in me. And in terms of my leadership style, I start from a place of, when you are a leader, you are a servant. You know, and servant leadership is something that I subscribe to. I am a big quote person, and so two quotes come to mind. First, you know Muhammad Ali, "Service is the rent that you pay for your time here on earth," and Matthew 23, "The greatest among you shall be servants." And so I really try to be a servant leader. I believe simply in hiring the best people, giving them the tools and resources to do their jobs, and then you get out of their way. I believe that you do with people, you don't do to people. And so that means that we are collaborating. It means that we are not top-down. So those are things that are a part of my leadership style. I'm very relationship-oriented. We work in, or work is human work. And, you know, I often say, context before content. In other words, you have to understand the context in which you are doing the work before you can get to the content of it. So that means that you understand the community, you understand our staff or families, et cetera, before you get to the content of the work. You know, at the Rice Schools, I was there for six years, and over six years, I only lost one member of my leadership team, because we had those relationships. I trusted them, they trusted me, we were aligned, we were rowing in the same direction, et cetera. And so when you espouse that type of leadership, people are willing to jump off a bridge for you, and sometimes that's what this work requires.
Great, thank you.
No one jump off a bridge, please.
Thank you. I have the second question. I've been to Jamaica, and it's one of my favorite accents, so if you want to slip into that, you're good. Our state recently passed a parental bill of rights initiative. What is your philosophy on parental rights in education? What is the purview of the school, and what is the purview of the home and the family?
Thank you. I'll start by saying, the home is the first classroom, the parent is the first teacher. And the schools cannot replace parents. You know, I think of this as like a triangle, and this is where my teacher instinct is to get a whiteboard, but it's a triangle, and the student's at the top, the school is on one side, the family's on one side, and together, we work in unison to uplift our kiddos. And so we are partners in this work. One of the things I did in South Bend was to reframe that partnership to working with our parents as co-teachers of our students. Again, we are in partnership here, and so that means simple things like making sure that your parents understand, to the degree possible or to the extent possible, the content, so that they can reinforce the learning that's happening in school at home, right? So utilizing families as co-teachers. I often found that when you have curriculum nights, and it is targeted, that parents are incentivized to come, and I know that parent engagement is one of the strategic goals here within the district. And so I view our parents as partners. I certainly am not a parent, and so I can't understand at that kind of visceral level what it means to entrust your child to someone else, but it is a responsibility that I take deeply and gravely. And so we have to make sure that our parents are informed, that parents trust us, that parents feel that we have their children's best interests at heart, and that the school should not try to subvert that or undermine that, is ultimately where I land. So we have to do this work in partnership. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, like, yep.
Great, thanks. Okay, so tell us what you have done to foster a positive and collaborative work culture among teachers, administrators, and support staff in your current district? And then is there anything that you would do differently here in Kentuck School District?
Sure. So the first thing you have to do is you have to meet people where they are. You know, it is not uncommon for new administrators, when they come into the role, they start day one, and I gotta hit the ground running, and they unveil this big plan and all the things they want to change, and I don't subscribe to that. In fact, I think you kind of set yourself up for failure. I think the first thing you have to do is to come in and get a lay of the land. You gotta talk to people. In my first one hundred days in South Bend, I did more than a dozen town hall meetings with families, including some that were in Spanish only, and by no means am I fluent. No, I can get by. But we know oftentimes our families whose language are not their primary language are sometimes shy to attend meetings, and when they do, they're sometimes shy to speak up, so I wanted to make sure that I was available to them, as well as live streaming and then also doing it via Zoom. I met with every single staff. I went into the classrooms and met with folks at the grade level. You have to meet people where they are. You have to show up. You know, I asked my principals to make sure that they are spending as much time as possible observing, that they're in the hallways, that they're not always in their office. I know a big part of our job is administrative paperwork, taking meetings, but if I am not on the front line, if I'm not visiting schools, if I'm not going to the basketball games, et cetera, then I'm missing the opportunities to build relationships with folks. So visibility is something that's important. You have to be accessible. You have to ingrain yourself as a part of the community. In South Bend right now, folks know on a Saturday, they're likely to see me at Al's Barbershop in North Olive, and the students are gonna see me there, and parents are gonna see me there. And the custodians and staff are gonna see me there. I'm getting my hair cut, and a custodian came to me about his paycheck, and I'm like, "I don't work in finance, but I'll look into it one day." You know, and my favorite spot for getting a burrito is Rosales on Western Avenue, which is literally across the street from Harrison Elementary School. And when I walk in and the kids see me, and they tuck their shirts back in their pants, and they straighten themselves, and I'm like, "No, you know, we're outside of school hours. I'm just here to get a burrito, like, relax, everybody." People see you in the community, so you have to be visible, you have to be accessible. And then I will just say, you know, no harm intended or disrespect to the adults, but on my worst days, when I am most stressed and ready to turn in my badge, I go to a school, and I hang out with the kiddos. And I'm not there in a formal capacity. I'm probably much to the teacher chagrin, interrupting PE or interrupting whatever they're doing, because going to the building, hanging out with the kids, seeing folks just do amazing things is what really keeps me connected and grounded to the work. But I build relationships. I am visible. I am accessible. I ingrain myself in the community, and I listen more than I speak. And I think that's how you do it, and that's what I would continue to do. Something that I wish I had done in South Bend that I would definitely do here is to sit on a board or an advisory committee of a community agency. I know we have some partners like communities in schools. I'm familiar with them, but if there's an opportunity to sit on an advisory board or something like that, that's something that I definitely want to do. That would be, that unfortunately, I did not get the opportunity to do while in South Bend. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, great, thank you.
Great.
Accountability at all levels is critical in the role of superintendent. Can you share a time when you had to hold district or school leaders accountable for underperforming student outcomes or failure to implement district policies or initiatives?
Absolutely. I'll start by saying that ultimately, as superintendent, the buck stops with me, and I have to be willing and able to hold myself accountable and do so publicly. So before I can hold others accountable, I have to be willing to hold myself accountable. I'll also say that accountability looks different in many ways, and more often than not, we think about accountability as something that's punitive, and it doesn't have to be. And so your question around an example of something potentially related to implementation or some, you know, giving directives that folks don't implement or follow, I think about when we made the decision to change our ELA curriculum, and if I'm not mistaken, Kennewick is going through that process as we speak. We had Witten Wisdom, and the teachers complained about Witten Wisdom. I had my own issues with Witten Wisdom. It doesn't have enough opportunity for student writing, and we know that writing is a key indicator of success in college. And so, you know, we put together a teaching committee and gave them parameters to go through the process of selecting a new curriculum. Of course, they chose the most expensive of the options, but we made sure we had the resources and we purchased it, and did all the training, and they were going to implement, but things weren't going the way that we had planned, right? And I remember folks on our leadership team just really being upset, you know. They were the ones that chose it. We gave them all the voice and the input. Why aren't they implementing something that they themselves chose? And so rather than getting upset and trying to hold them accountable in the way that we think about accountability in a punitive manner, it was more important for me to understand the why. What was the roadblock or the barrier towards that implementation? And one of the things I came to realize, looking at that example, as well as other examples where things didn't go necessarily as planned, is that, you know, the best-made plans are, come down to implementation. And as an organization, we suck at implementation. So we were really good at coming up with a plan for execution. We had the plan for how we were gonna progress monitor and how we're gonna assess, but we didn't really think through all of the details of what that implementation looks like. And so for me, the accountability was to the seeking to understand what the roadblock was, and then go back and course correct. And I owned that, spoke about that at the board meeting, and then forced myself and the leadership team to work on better implementation of plans. I can certainly give examples of putting people's on performance improvement plan. I can give examples of separating people, again, in the way that we think about traditionally accountability. I will be honest and say, I struggle with that. My team will say, I sometimes am very too slow, and I'm very, I am a nurturer. I believe you plant seeds, and you order it, and you let it grow. And there are times where a principal will come and say, "We need to move this teacher out," and I'm like, "No, more PD, another performance improvement plan," and it's like, Davion, this is the fourth. Like, at this point, we need to move on. But again, when you invest in people, you build relationships. For me, it's not that simple. This teacher has student loans. I know this teacher's kid, you know. And so like, I understand, we all have to pay rent or mortgage on the first. And so those decisions are very, very challenging for me, and still, I take a long time to get. So we're talking about traditional accountability. I will get there, but it does, I like to exhaust all options before I go there. Does that answer your question? No, thank you. Okay.
Okay, so as a board superintendent team, it's our responsibility to articulate a clear mission and vision for our district. How would you go about carrying out the board's vision and mission? How do you go about inserting your own ideas to the board?
And so this kind of goes back to the first question from the board president around why Kennewick. The vision and mission resonates with me, including and where you start, and what I think is my most important job as a school leader, providing a safe environment for kiddos. That's the number-one job, and I know it might sound a little bit counterintuitive, but the way I explain it is, I can call a parent and apologize for their child failing the state test, or apologize for not graduating on time, but I cannot call a parent and apologize for their child not returning home that night. So that is our number-one job, and the vision that starts with safety really resonates with me. So I think the first part of your question, alignment. And if there is a natural alignment, then it is easy for the superintendent and the board to work together, because there is that natural alignment. The superintendent works at the pleasure of the board. I don't believe that you should ever get out in front of the board. One of the things I did and continue to do, I make sure to acknowledge the work of the board in every single opportunity that I'm able to, and that I thank the board. I invite the board to join me in Washington. I had weekly one-on-ones with the board meeting, with the board president, rather, and then prior to every board meeting, our board meetings were on Tuesdays. On Mondays, I would call every single board member, go through the agenda. I would provide an annotated agenda as well, so they understood exactly what was on the agenda. So there was that, you know, unison. And again, my philosophy is no surprises. I don't like surprises, not for birthdays, anything, no. And so the way I think about it is, you know, as board members, you are a part of the community, and the last thing that I would want is for you as a board member, you know, on a Sunday morning, you're at church, and a parent walks up to you, you know, as you guys are walking out, and says, "Hey, did you know that this is happening?" Or for you to be in the grocery store, and a parent asks you a question about something, and for you to be caught off guard or to be surprised. And so just as how I don't like surprises, it is my job to make sure that the board is never surprised. So that is like the core philosophy of my belief in the relationship between the superintendent and the board. And there is a natural alignment in terms of vision, mission, and strategy. I also love, and I think this is the first strategic plan I've ever seen, where you have the domains or you have the goals across stakeholder groups. So there are the goals specifically for parents, students and families, community partners, the district itself, and then staff. And I love that the one for staff is also safe-seen and valued, or safe-known and valued. So there is a natural alignment. I do not foresee any kind of obstacle in being able to talk in one voice. Does that answer your question?
Perfect, yes, sir. Thank you.
Great. Alright, we're exactly on time, so we're tracking just good.
Okay.
So as we've seen across Washington State, and even across the country and in neighboring districts, many are in financial crisis due to mismanagement, court leadership, a wide variety of different issues. What specific strategies would you employ to ensure responsible management of our resources in order to ensure continued support from our community? And with that, can you just share an example of a levy or a bond that you worked with in your past that was successful?
Okay, so I'll start with the last part of the question. I have never personally led a levy or a bond. My district does have bonds right now that are gonna re-up next year, and so if I'm there, I would certainly participate in that. That said, I am pretty familiar. It's a part of the superintendent's licensure coursework, but I've never personally led one, and that's somewhere where I would look to the board for guidance and support. Finance is something that I feel pretty strongly about. In Georgia, at the Rice Schools, I got a CDFI loan, and then I did a county-level public finance bond. It was fifteen million dollars, but it's nothing to the tune of what we think about here in Washington in terms of bonds and levies. When I got to South Bend, you know, as I was going through the interview process, I was doing my due diligence, asking about the finances of the system, and I saw everything was good, signed my contract, and then I sat down with the then CFO, and I just didn't like the vagueness of the responses, so I ordered a comprehensive audit as well as a look ahead, a two-year look ahead, and when I presented that to the board and executive session in our very first board meeting, I thought I was gonna get fired that day, because I sat down and said, "In 2024, we're gonna have a six-million-dollar gap." And they're, "What are you talking about? You know, your predecessor said..." And I'm like, "Well, my predecessor isn't here anymore," and that's why I ordered this deep dive into our finances. And so they were like, "Well, how did this get by us then?" you know. But I then had to begin the process of course correcting. And in that first year, I cut over two million dollars in spending. In the second year, an additional two-point-one million dollars in spending, and cutting spending in a way that keeps as much cuts away from the classroom as possible. So you get creative, you know, do we need to merge bus routes? What programs do we have? I am a big believer in subtracting to add, you know, sometimes you have to do more to do less. Why do we have, you know, if this is our tier-one program, why do we then have six-tier-two programs, and then an additional three-tier-three programs? How can we better streamline? So those were some of the things that I had to do, and yes, I am not afraid of making those financial hard choices. So I originally went to South Bend as the chief of the state-created turnaround. So in 2019, State Board of Education in Indiana went into the district and said, "You are failing all the schools on the west side, that were predominantly black and brown in schools, poor students," and took those schools away from the district and created this micro-district, created a separate board. And so they gave that, that was the entity I ran as kind of a superintendent of a micro-district. And as I made that forecast in 2022, when we got to 2024, I sat down with my board president, superintendent, and the board president of the district, and said like, "This thing that I talked about two years ago is here, and I also know it's here for the larger district. So we need to look at reunification, and that could potentially mean eliminating my own job." And that wasn't the first time I had talked myself out of a job, but they felt that, they ultimately agreed with me, but then as a part of the reunification, requested that I stayed with the district as an assistant superintendent and created this role for me. So I'm not afraid of making the hard decisions when it relates to finances, if that's what's in the best interest of kiddos, even if it's at my own expense. And so hopefully, that's an example. I know we don't have a lot of time, otherwise I would go into more detail.
No, but appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, Davion. Oftentimes, our state passes legislation that is not aligned with our community values. As superintendent, what strategies would you use to ensure compliance with the state? As superintendent, what strategies would you use to ensure compliance with the state laws while also finding ways to reflect the community values within the framework of those laws?
Yeah, absolutely. So I appreciate that this board has identified a legislative liaison. And I certainly think that is a wise move. And I uh reviewed kind of the legislative priorities from funding for special education and uh the the new bills by uh Senator Peterson and Senator Wallace in terms of uh uh bringing back some funding for special. I can't believe it's capped at sixteen percent, which is a whole different discussion. Um, so I think being proactive is the first step in engaging um engaging uh in Indiana, we would say downstate, uh in 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 engaging the capital um proactively. Uh, that being said, when uh laws are made, as they are often, sometimes it are engaging the folks who have to implement them. I'm dealing with that right now with a truancy law that I am personally uh responsible for. That uh if parents, uh if kids are truant at ten on excused absences, uh parents can get charged with a misdemeanor um for six months in prison or twenty-five hundred dollar fine. Or if it's a felony, then it's a ten thousand dollar fine and a two and a half year prison sentence. And I have to sign every single affidavit now. It's a law that I don't necessarily agree with, but we have to follow the law because there are larger implications. And the last thing I would wanna do um as superintendent is to not comply with a law that would result in some sort of a legal action against the district or the withholding of our funds. Um, and as we see right now, that that is very likely. That being said, uh, one of the things uh I know to be true is that history teaches us that what's legal isn't always what's right. And uh what's right isn't always what's legal. Um, and so it's it's a it's a tight rope that you have to balance, but it's it's my job to mitigate risk for the district. Um, and I would work with our legislative liaison and our either general counsel or outside counsel to make sure that we have a full understanding of the law, um pushback where we can within reason, but still remaining compliant. You're welcome.
Thank you. So you've already spoken to this, but we're constantly in a state of change.
Yes.
And uh hopefully improvement as well. So tell us about your experience in leading change, and you've spoken to this a little bit already. What do you consider to be the key factors in effectively leading change that results in positive outcomes for students? And then what do you see as your role in this regard if you were to be selected as our superintendent?
Sure. Uh, so I would wanna make sure that the change is necessary and justified. Uh, you know, there is a lot of change fatigue in education. Uh, and I think one of the most frustrating things you can do to a teacher is to say, okay, we're changing something again. Teachers are like, I just finally figured out how to do this and now we're changing it again. Like, so, you know, I am not a proponent of change for the sake of change. Uh, I also believe that before we change something, we have to demonstrate that we can sustain that over time. And I think one of the reasons that a lot of districts right now are facing some challenges with the loss of ESER is because we use those ESER dollars to implement a lot of things, but it's necessarily forecast. Well, what happens if and when we become too reliant on this thing that's being funded through ESER? And then we lose the ESER dollars, then what do we do, right? So uh making sure that we can sustain change over a long period of time is something that I look at. Um, so before we even get to the change, my question is, is this change necessary? Um, is this change aligned to our strategic priorities? Um, and can we sustain, can we sustain this change over time? Um, and if we can answer yes to those three questions, then by all means, I'm open to the process of change. Um, uh, I got introduced in my MBA program to uh Cotter, leading change. And so I am a student of his in terms of change management. Um, you start with you building your kind of guiding coalition. Um, and so when we even changed the bell schedule so that we could build in weekly professional development, um, which we never had before, uh but our teachers were hungry for professional development. We needed to do it at the same time across all of our schools so that we could do vertical and horizontal uh professional development outside of PLCs. So it's amazing when you can bring together all your third grade ELA teachers across multiple schools. But it's also just as amazing when you can bring together one through five ELA teachers so they can understand like the vertical progression of what's happening uh ELA-wise. Um, that was a big change to the to the schedule. Um, but we brought together a small group of teachers. We had the conversation. Um, I identified who were gonna be my ambassadors for this thing that we were looking at. They went out and spoke uh to their teacher teams. I engaged the teachers' union. We had their support. Um, because what was important as well was that we were able to to come up with a way to do weekly professional development without adding time to the teacher contract, uh which was vital um uh for them. Um, and we then engaged the larger community, the board. And after getting all of that feedback, the board adopted the recommendation to change the schedule so that we could provide um weekly professional development. But again, I start with, is it necessary? Um, is it aligned towards strategic goals? Can we sustain it over time? And if the answer is yes to that, then we begin the process. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Can you share an example of an innovative or novel approach you took to improve your student outcomes? It failed or did not work. Why do you think it failed? And what did you do?
Uh, sure. Uh, well, I'd like to think uh that it worked. It is working. Um, so we came up with uh something called uh uh promotion in doubt. Um, uh, which is where at the end of the first semester, we would identify students who are not on track to being promoted at the end of the school year. Uh, and then we would provide them with a modified schedule to provide either uh before or after-school additional instruction uh uh as a way to uh get them caught up. Uh, and then if that didn't happen, require them to do uh summer school. And so the way the process worked was that, starting in January, we would bring families in from all the students that we were, I we would identify as uh PID, uh promotion in doubt. We would have one-on-one meetings with the families and the students. And students could be promotion in doubt either because of academics, behavior, or attendance. And so we would come up with a P uh PID plan. It's kind of like your promotion IEPs as an individualized plan where we would set targeted goals. So, you know, as you probably deal with here, it's the first semester. And at the end of the first semester, you've been absent sixty-seven times. Like, who does that? So our goal now is, can you just come to school one day a week for the next three weeks? And then we would progressively up the ante as a way to kind of build success and success begets success, to move the student along. And then if they didn't make the necessary progress, we would then move towards uh summer school. And then if that didn't happen, we would do a placement with a um a placement to the next grade with a uh individualized placement plan. And that was something that was not done in our district previously, so that was something that I brought to our district. And then subsequently, the following year, the state passed a law that now mandates summer school for students who uh failed at the third grade. We were ahead in that we had started this kind of a PID thing in summer school. And so summer school wasn't a thing where where I was um prior to that. Um, so, you know, it was innovative in the sense that it was new there, uh but was something that I had had experience with in in other places. Does that answer your question?
Okay.
So how do you decide which task to delegate versus those that you handle personally? As a superintendent, how do you ensure that delegation does not result in losing accountability?
Absolutely. Uh, so when I think about delegation, a couple of things. Uh, urgency, uh skill set of the team, interest of of the team. So if I have someone on the team who is an aspiring superintendent or aspiring to do whatever in their career, um, and there are some tasks that are within reason, that giving them the opportunity to do that task by delegating to them helps to helps to build their skill set as they aspire to move to wherever, whatever progression in their career, then by all means, I'm I'm open to doing that. Um, the same thing is true for skill set. So uh the greatest leaders are simply the best leaders uh because they have the best team. Um, and that's why, you know, talent management, which I think I have a pretty good uh skill at sourcing and um retaining uh talent uh is 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 critical. Um, and then there is urgency. Uh, unfortunately, there are times when we do not have the luxury uh to come together as a team um or to consult or to facilitate um or to delegate. I have to make the calls such as an emergency, and I am that. Those are things that I am explicit about, so it's not a surprise. Um, so, you know, there are times where we we go into a command and control. You know, there is, you know, God forbid, you know, uh an intruder on a campus. This is not the opportunity for us to do a thought exercise in how do we get to the right decision. You know, I am the GM, the coach, and the quarterback in that situation. I'm making the call and this is the play. Um, and uh so if it's not something life where that emergency, uh then I am a lot more uh collaborative. You know, um, uh, uh, the easiest command decisions are the easiest to make but the hardest to implement. Collaborative decisions are the hardest to make but the easiest to implement. Because people uh people support the things that they help to build. And so that is my natural inclination in terms of decision-making. And so with the exception of those uh kind of command and control situations where it's an emergency, it is my natural inclination to delegate, to bring groups of people in together to make decisions. Also, what then happens is when you have to make the tough decisions, because you brought people along the way with you, when you do get to that tough decision, even if they disagree, they understand the rationale for it. So going back to the finance example, we had this six million dollar gap. People knew that two years ahead of time, and it was something that we talked about. We had done small group studies, et cetera. By the time we got to the decisions that need to be made, even folks who were impacted by the decision um understood why the decision had to make, to be made.
All right, so we each have one question left. Can you share with us your philosophy on what strategies would you use to help reduce disruptive behavior?
Yeah. Uh, and yeah, and I think that's timely. Um, I was looking at your data and I did see that student discipline had gone up a li- uh a little bit from twenty-two twenty from twenty twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, from like a three point eight to a point four point two or something like that. So not significant, but I also noticed that teacher uh teacher claims of incidences on campus had gone up as well in your in your in your data. I'm not sure to what extent those two things are related, but certainly it seems like discipline um uh is an is an issue here. Um, I think um that but kids are kids and you're always going to have issues of students not following the expectations that we have for them. And I think to expect otherwise is is unrealistic. It doesn't mean that you lower the expectations, but we start from that place. Um, I think we also need to examine the things that we expect of our students. So oftentimes, I am leading PD with staff and it's, you know, our what have you. And, uh, you know, they're on their computers or they're looking outside the window, but then you get into your classroom and, you know, there are these big windows and a bird flies by and a kid looks and you're like, oh, you're off task. And that's a demerit or, you know, you're, that's a referral. It's like, you can't ask kids to do things that adults themselves can't do with fully-formed brains and, you know, actualers and master's degrees, right? It's like, I think we start from a place of assessing the expectations that we have. Are they reasonable or do we just have these expectations and rules because that's just the way we've always done it? And then you get into this vicious cycle of expectation, expectation not being met and being punitive as as opposed to is is this a skill or a will thing? And do we need to make sure that we have taught students the expectations that we have for them? That they understand what the criteria for success looks like and then give them the opportunity to practice that? And we're giving them lots of feedback. Feedback is feedback from teachers, academic or behavior, otherwise, is one of the biggest indicator of student success. We have to give students consistent feedback, including on behavior. Um, and so those are some of the strategies that I uh use. Uh, you know, among the many things listed in the um the learner profile for the district, um, uh, if I may, I would just push us to, I would push us to include uh joy in that um and health and happiness as a part of that. I think all the other things are great. Our learning environments need to be joyful as well. Um, and so students need to enjoy coming to school and feel invested uh in that process and have a sense of ownership. And I think if you do that on the front end as well, um, uh, that's helpful. And then there's certainly, you know, restorative justice and things of that nature that um that you can look at in terms of repairing harm and moving away from being too punitive. Uh, but I don't know to what extent just the cycle of detentions and uh expulsions, et cetera, what good does that do for students, you know? You're welcome.
Okay. Um, we strive to maintain political neutrality in our classrooms because politics and personal ideological views do not belong. How do you ensure that that our schools and curriculum remain focused on academic standards and not personal ideologies or beliefs?
Uh, well, it should not as a starting point. Uh, again, I would go back to the things that are outlined in the district's mission as well as our uh strategic plan, uh as well as the learner profile. So we want our students to have social skills, digital citizenship, digital citizenship skills, uh 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 and to be future-ready. And if the things that we are teaching do not align to that, then we shouldn't be doing it. And that's just kind of how I would draw the line. So does the curriculum, does the task, does the text align to making sure that students are future-ready? Digital citizenship, providing them with social skills, community uh engagement skills. If it does, yes. If it doesn't, then we shouldn't be uh be doing that. Um, there is already so much happening in the world that we need to make sure that our classrooms are a safe space for our students. Um, and that includes being safe from divisiveness and um political ideology of any kind. Um, that's not something that I uh subscribe to. Um, and that's just the the last thing that we need um as a as a district. So uh I personally don't subscribe to that. Um, and if 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 our teachers are um deviating away from the state standards or deviating away from uh content that would help us to achieve the things we've articulated in the learner profile, then I would wanna figure out how do you even have the time to do that? Um, that that's that that's my question. Uh, but there's there's no place for that.
Thank you. Kennewick School District is one of, if not the first in the state, to provide both armed school resource and safety officers on all of our campuses. How would you approach ensuring physical safety of both students and staff in a district of our size while still fostering a positive and welcoming environment?
Sure. Uh, so having armed uh safety officers, um, I think that is a step in the right direction. I would wanna look at safe entryways. So do all of our buildings have secured entries? There's a vestibule that can uh self-contain and um someone before they get access to the entire uh building. Um, uh, do all of our visitors um have to scan their ID cards either through like the rapid system or something uh similar? Um, metal detectors uh if needed, which is something that um we implemented just this past year in South Bend. Uh, I piloted in the micro district, uh clear backpacks, um, which then the wider district uh implemented. Um, uh, people kind of think of me in South Bend as a little bit of a safety nut. Um, I I remember um being at odds with the county election board because, you know, public schools are places that you have elections. Sure, no problem. schools are places that you have elections, sure, no problem, but can't have people coming into the building to vote while students are simultaneously in the building. And so people were just walking in and out and kids are like going from their classroom to lunch and just random stranger is going to vote and it's like, we haven't checked anyone's ID. I mean, they're just coming in to vote. And so that was a big push. And so now we do e-learning on election days so that the county can use our, but they just didn't understand why and it was, we've always done it this way and, you know, you're not from here, so you don't know. And my response was, well, you know, no one thought that Uvalde would happen before Uvalde happened, right? And if it can happen there, it can happen there. So I got them around to it and now our buildings are closed on election days. So safety is, is very important to me. I'm not sure what the school designs are here in Indiana. There are way too many doors and folks often prop doors. So putting silent alarms on doors, so if someone just pushes it or props it, there's a noise, it signals. I've been a part of schools that implemented cameras that when there is an emergency, the camera goes directly to where the incident is and then can feed that to the local police department. Been in schools that have had panic buttons that the teachers wear. They hate wearing them because it's something around their neck, but they can push it and it sends help or it will signal the alarm to shut doors, et cetera. So those are all technologies and systems that I'm familiar with, but I will simply say, which was something that wasn't in place in, in South Bend, we got to have a comprehensive emergency plan. I also introduced a crisis response and intervention manual that had things like foam trees when there's an emergency, things of that nature. And you have to review that safety plan annually and you have to do it with the fire department and the police department and the state emergency response department, if there is one in that state. New Orleans Public Schools, I did our first ever safety summit where I brought all the schools together over the summer and brought the Louisiana GMA to provide comprehensive training. So again, if, if, if you don't remember anything else about me tonight, I'm the safety guy. I, I'm going to make sure your kids get home safe and that staff get home safe. That is my, that's what keeps me up at night. I don't put down my phone until I know that all the bus routes are done and all the kids are where they're supposed to be. And then that's when I kind of like put my work phone down.
What is your philosophy on collective bargaining and its role in fostering a positive relationship between the district and the union? Can you share an example of a successful collective bargaining experience you led or were involved in?
Yeah, absolutely. So I am a big proponent of teachers exercising their constitutional right to collectively bargain. I think that is a good thing. It helps to hold us administrators accountable. Our teachers work long hours, they are underpaid. And so I'm happy to sit down with any kind of teacher, union or body that's advocating for better treatment of teachers. In South Bend, we have a teachers' union. I have a great relationship with them. We even got to the point where we talked about differentiated compensation and differentiated evaluation. So I introduced a new teacher evaluation system in, or micro district, worked with the teachers' union on that. And so that was something that they really liked because we were able to differentiate, for example, based on teacher performance, how many observations they would get. Or if you were a novice teacher, you were required to do a fully scripted lesson plan versus if you were impacting teachers. So that's what we did our scale. We didn't like the language like failing or anything like that, then you are only required to do a lesson outline. So it's like simple differentiated support levels and then correlated that. We, where we couldn't get to an agreement was differentiated pay. But, you know, we, we got, we got just short of that. So I'm all for teachers exercising their constitutional right. I work well with our teachers' union and I'm sure the president of our union in South Bend would, would echo that. I listen. Again, they're on the frontline. There's the work that we see that teachers do, but the work is beyond what's possible within the contract hours. I know that, they know that. Teachers are grading on weekends, they're writing lesson plans. On weekends, they're making phone calls when they get home at night, when they haven't even tended to their home children yet, sorry. So anything that I can do to help make sure that our teachers feel appreciated and sustained and retain them, which is a part of the reason that I introduced the state interviews, because, you know, exit interviews, by then it's too late and your regular engagement interviews that you don't get valuable data from that. Anything I can do to make our teachers feel appreciated and stay, I'm, I'm all for it because we already have a hard time with attracting teachers to the profession. That's actually a question.
Yes, thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, final question. As you know, S R funds were one-time funds provided by Congress to address the educational impact of COVID-19. Can you share with us how your district prioritized and allocated the S R funds?
Yeah. So those decisions were made prior to me. I know some went to capital funds. A lot went to intervention programs. Some went to teacher retention. So I can recall, for example, there were two schools that were identified that if you decided to go and work at that school, you were given an additional $10,000. Some were, some funds were utilized for teacher recruitment. So if you wanted, if you went back to get credentials to be a special education teacher, we paid for it and then you also got like an additional $5,000 stipend or, or things like that. Hindsight is 2020. If I, if I, I'm trying to take a, like a step, a leap here, step out on a limb here and I'm trying to, I'm, I'm sensing potentially your question is what would I have done? Then I would have invested the funds into, into programs that, once gone, would not jeopardize whether or not those programs or practices could continue to happen. And that's a big part of the staffing crisis that a lot of districts are having now. A, I think in general, it's good practice that if you are going to fund positions with grants, that we are very clear on the job announcement and on the contract subject grant funds availability, which was something that was not in place. And so, you know, people took roles thinking that these were going to be roles that would be sustained over time. Simultaneously, we then built our systems of support for students with these roles in mind and some of those roles or programs have now become indispensable. And so you're now in this kind of a quagmire in what to do. I would have used the funds to the extent possible for things that could have been one-off, so transportation repairs, facilities, things that, that you could have used funds allocated for that. Otherwise, maybe move some money around from deferred maintenance into programmatic to then use the S R one-off funds to pay for things that you could do one time and then not have to need it beyond October 1st, 2024. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I think I checked it out before you came. Drink it. Okay. Give me a second.
Analysts and everybody will start the next one at 7:35. Give you a quick break.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, folks, we're going to get started.
Thank you, sir. Pleasure to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
All right. Good evening, Bill. We appreciate your time being here tonight. We've set aside the next 45 to 50 minutes for this interview. Board members will take turns asking you a wide variety of questions. We'll go through round table. I've asked the board members to hold any follow-up questions until the end. Once we get through these questions, if there's an opportunity to ask those follow-up questions, we'll, we'll ask them to you. First, we'll quickly start with introductions. We'll introduce ourselves and then from there, we ask you to just take a few minutes, introduce yourself, maybe some of your professional history and then also what led you to specifically apply for this Kennewick School District superintendent position? So I'll start. So Gabe Galbraith, board president.
Micah Valentine, vice president.
Brittany Gludh, and I'm the legislative representative.
Josh Miller, just want to let you know I am on call tonight with my job. And so if I, if I'm looking at my text message for a moment or if I have to step out for a call, I apologize. Unfortunately, I, I won't miss too much.
Understood. There are emergencies, right? Thank you.
And I'm Michael Connors.
Good to meet you.
So I'm Bill Fritz. So just a little bit of introduction. This is my 33rd year in education. Started out as a mathematics teacher up in Everett, Washington. I've done a number of administrative roles after that, high school assistant principal, middle school principal. And then my first administrative role was in human resources. I actually spent seven years in human resources leadership, a few years in Shoreline School District and a few years in Vero Beach, Florida, in Indian River County School District. Also includes eight years as a superintendent, three years as a superintendent in Tillicum, which is near Tacoma, South Tacoma. And then last five years, I've been the superintendent at Napa School District, which is in Astoria, Oregon. In between there, I earned a doctorate in 2015 at Northwest Nazarene University in Idaho. And so when I moved back from the East Coast back to the Northwest, I did spend a few years as a professor of teacher education at Bushnell University in Eugene. So I've been involved in education both from preschool all the way, you know, through graduate school. And actually I've, I've advised of dissertations as well, so kind of seen the whole, whole thing. And I've loved every minute of the 33 years that I've been doing this work. I love inspiring young people. I love working with people who enjoy and love serving the community and, and serving people and making a difference in their lives and making a better future. And so the superintendent role in Kennewick is of interest to me. Kennewick is, this is the only job I've applied for since I was a superintendent in Napa. I just kind of noticed the posting last year when it was a deputy position, but we were in the middle of a bond project and it wasn't pragmatic for me to make that kind of move. And, but Kennewick's always been kind of intriguing to me. Got a couple of friends who grew up here and they speak very well of this community. They love the fact that it's still kind of a big town, but it feels like a small town and kind of that blend. And that, you know, sounds like the kind of place where I'd, I'd like to work and live and enjoy life. And additionally, I'm, I'm intrigued by the community because I, I know Dr. Pierce. We, when I was in Tillicum, she was the superintendent like Washington and it's easier to follow a superintendent who's doing a good job than it is to follow a mess. And so I, I, I trust that, I trust that things, I mean, there will be some things we need to work on, of course, we always need to grow, but I'm looking forward to following in her footsteps as, as a leader of the Kennewick School District. The other thing is I have a son who lives in LA. There's a direct flight from Pasco Airport to LA. I mean, you gotta check the boxes, right? And, you know, a legionnaire, gotta love them. And then additionally, my, my wife is willing to live in Kennewick. So, you know, when you're, when you're looking to make a, a family decision and a move, you need to make sure that everybody is, is committed and on board. And so our, our whole family's excited about the potential for not only the position, but also living and contributing to the community.
All right, we will kick off. I'll start the question. What do you think is the most important quality of a leader? And describe for us your leadership style that you would bring to our district.
So I, I think I'll start with the latter part of the question and it'll probably lead us back to the first part. I, I think that quality leaders are in touch with the organization. And so for, for me, that means being highly visible, not only within our schools, but also in our community. Not because in the role of superintendent of a district this size, you, you don't do direct work of supervising teachers and, and working with kids. You obviously do that work, you know, via other people who have primary responsibility for that. But I think that the leader needs to know how things are looking in the organization, whether the strategic goals that we have are actually taking root in the classrooms. And the leader needs to be really connected within the, within the schools and the communities. So the, so I think a hallmark of my leadership would be visibility, connectedness and, and listening. And so the, the superintendent can't lead the district all by themselves. It's a team effort. And so being connected with people in the community, both on an informal basis and a formal basis, is really important. And then as the superintendent, we're the largest employer in Kennewick. We're a large organization. We impact many, many lives. And so there needs to be communication and listening beyond our schools, beyond our, our children and our employees, but also in the community, in the greater community at large. So whether that be communicating with other governmental agencies, whether that be communicating with volunteer organizations, but being connected within the overall community is important because we're part of the fabric of the community. So back to the first part, I, I think that the most important quality is connectedness and invisibility. And I guess that's more than one important thing, but, and, and it's just being in touch.
The state recently passed our state parental bill of rights initiative. What is your philosophy on parental rights in education? What is the purview of the school and what is the purview of the home?
Well, I mean, the children are their parents' children. They're not, they're not our children. We, we play a role in supporting the education and making a brighter future for children. But the first and foremost role and influence on children is, is the parent. Now, I, I actually, there, it's been a federal law on parent rights since 2015 as part of the E S S A law. That one isn't very well known in these here parts in, you know, Washington, Oregon, California. But there are a lot of federal laws with regards to parental rights. For example, there are certain things we're not supposed to be asking children about related to identity and things like that. We're not even supposed to be asking those questions. That's best left in the hands of the parents. That's not our role. I also think that we serve a diverse community. And so that means that there are people with different political philosophies, different religious values within our community and, and different ethnic and cultural backgrounds and different political beliefs. And so as a school, it's not our job to weigh in one way or, or the other on those things, except for things like, you know, the, the golden rule and things, things like that that are important for, to inculcate values for, to be, have a civil society. But when, when it comes to those things, they're a little bit more controversial or where there are a variety of beliefs on it, we need to show respect for all of those beliefs. And so in, in my mind, we, we, we need to be sort of agnostic with regards to that and supportive of the parents raising their own children with their own values. Now, I will say, you know, there are times where a child's values and their parents' values diverge. I mean, I've raised middle schoolers, so I know that. Eventually it kind of comes back together usually, but so, so there are times where those differ from each other, but even, even in those times, the, the parent is the primary person who should be working with the children on figuring out where they're going in life and, and what they want to do and what they want to aspire to do. Now, we certainly play a part in supporting that vision for the child and supporting that vision for the family. But, you know, when, when we're asked to weigh in one way or the other on those things, But, you know, when we're asked to weigh in one way or the other on those things, I really think it's our job to help children think strategically about that, to look at multiple viewpoints, and to really let them know, you know, some people believe this, some people believe that. And really, you know, I'm not going to tell you how to believe, but, you know, I invite you to have a conversation with your family, have a conversation with people that you trust, adults, and, you know, whether that be people in the community or your own family. You know, we can let you know that there are different viewpoints on certain things, but it's not our job to tell you which way you should go. And we need to show respect for parents in that, in that respect.
Great, thank you. Tell us what you have done to foster a positive and collaborative work culture among teachers, administrators, and support staff in your current district? And then is there anything that you would do differently as the superintendent of Kennewick School District?
So actually, this, it's interesting. I walked into the lobby here, was waiting to come in for the interview, and I saw your stability policy on the sign there by the door. That's what we did. Back in two thousand and twenty, as you know, things were a little bit challenging with the pandemic and public schools, and I think there was a lot of critique of schools at that point in time. And there was a lot of political banter out there, frankly. And we found that people who had very strong opinions, which we respect, sometimes didn't express those opinions to the school district or one another or our staff in ways that were productive to move forward in our working relationship. And so sometimes that was staff with one another, sometimes that was labor groups, sometimes that was parents, sometimes that was community members at large who didn't have children or something, and sometimes it was the kids. And so we embarked on a process of developing a stability policy within our district. We held listening sessions with multiple groups of stakeholders. So we had a community group, a parent group. We asked the students, the middle schoolers and the high schoolers, their thoughts on how we should both treat one another and be treated. So we wanted to know what people's expectations were regarding the way they were treated. We wanted to know what they were willing to commit to in the treatment of others within our organization. And not surprisingly, there was a lot of commonality between all of those groups and amongst them about what they wanted from others and what they were willing to give. And so we used that as a starting point to develop a working document that defined how we're going to treat one another within our school district. Some of that sort of dovetailed into our policy regarding complaints because we wanted people to go directly to the source to have a conversation with them if they had a concern, so they could have a face-to-face conversation. We believe face-to-face communication is more productive than email or social media. And so we invited people to go to the source first, have a conversation, listen to understand, assume positive intent, things like that, so that that conversation could be productive at the outset. And more often than not, when two people get in a room together and they have a conversation and they're kind toward one another, they could work out their differences and figure out some common ground. And so in our, in our district, we've seen a shift in that. We, and we also, can't require this, but we also strongly advise people to come talk to us and not just resort to social media. Because we often, like, when something on social media, we don't even know what's out there necessarily. And they may not even give us an opportunity to resolve it, and there may be misinformation there. And so we've moved toward a culture in our district where people, it's not perfect, but where people more often than not will come to us and talk with us and where the communication is flowing a lot better within our organization and there's a better atmospheric coram and respect. So. So as far as superintendent of Kennewick School District, it looks like we have charted a similar path from what I can tell out there, looking at that. And so I think that we probably would be sympathetic, we'd probably be connected on that. We'd probably continue the path. Of course, we always need to monitor and adjust, and that's the other thing in our process in Napa, is that document is not a stationary document, but we revisit it frequently. So once a year, each of those stakeholder groups comes back to the document and double-check, can I still commit to these things and have the expectations shifted? And we just, two weeks ago, had a, I hold superintendent chats in the community. So it's just an open meeting with the superintendent to talk about anything people want to talk about. And one of the things we did during that meeting was we reviewed the community commitments around stability. We did make some minor changes in the language that are based on community expectations and also what our team felt like we could commit to with regard to the community. There were minor changes, but I think it's always good to look back at it and reflect on it and double-check if we're living it the way we want to live it and if we're following the commitments that we made with one another. And so I don't know if that process is in place in Kennewick, but I think that's something that would be valuable if it isn't. It was valuable if it is, but it might be something we could put in place if it isn't.
Accountability at all levels is critical in the role of superintendent. Can you share a time when you had to hold district or school leaders accountable for underperforming student outcomes or failures to implement district policies or initiatives?
So I spent seven years in human resources and I've spent eight years as a superintendent, so that's part of the job. So I need to be thoughtful about this because I want to respect people's rights to confidentiality. So give me a moment to think about, how to put this out there. Yeah, I'm just trying, I'm trying to figure out how to do it that way. So, well, when I was working in Indian River County, Florida, district of about eighteen thousand students, very similar to this, I supervised six principals within the school district. I had two principals who, things weren't working as well as we would have liked within their schools. One of them, he had great passion for the kids. I guess, let me frame it and I'll come back to this. As a leader, I try to look at people who are within our organization through two frames. It's their skill level and their will level. So their skill level, do they have the skills to do the work that they need to do with children or as a leader? And the other part is what's their motivation level? That's the will part, right? So is their motivation level sufficient to, where they're continuing to move forward, continuing to grow and continuing to be open-minded about improvement? And so when I look at a situation where somebody isn't performing, well, I guess if they aren't performing, you're just a cheerleader for them, right? You continue to, you know, encourage them in their growth. You continue to provide training for them, which doesn't need to be strategic because they're kind of in that mindset anyway. When you have a person who's lacking one or the other, if they're lacking skill, you train them, right? Especially if they've got motivation and they're willing to do better, you provide some training for them so they can get better. So that's an example of one of the individuals. This guy was chronically disorganized. And so things in his school weren't working very well, and his staff was frustrated because of his lack of organization. And so for that individual, we basically worked on, that wasn't his nature, that wasn't who he was. He was a people person. He was out there. He had charisma. He was great with the kids and good on a human level with the parents and the teachers, but just the trains weren't running on time, right? So basically, we trained him and his secretary on how to work together because the secretary had gifts in that area and the principal was lacking in that area. And we taught him how to delegate so that he looked organized. And so that the things, and she was thankful that we did that because she's like, I've been trying to manage him, but he wouldn't let me, right? And so we were able to basically work in that situation to try to train him in how to delegate a little bit on the things that are against the organization so that the school could run better. And now he's been a principal there for almost fifteen years. And things are working really well in that school. It was exciting. I mean, within a year, the place was totally different and improved. So I think the harder challenge is when someone doesn't have the motivation, right? And so I don't know if you've noticed in my resume, part of my research when I worked on my PhD was regarding self-efficacy. So it's the belief of oneself and their ability to make change and improve their situation. And in the case of teachers, the situation with children, or in the case of leaders, they're be able to improve how the staff are doing within the school. And so there are a number of strategies that one can use in order to help a person develop motivation in that area. Some of that is looking at success experiences. And so, you know, identifying areas where they, places where they have been successful so they build some confidence in those areas and their ability to do better. Sometimes it's vicarious experience, so seeing that maybe others are getting results under similar circumstances when we aren't in this situation. And so they realize that it's possible to do that. Sometimes it's just verbal persuasion. It's conversation about it. And, you know, sometimes it's, it's, it's actually, and this gets into psychology, right? It's things that are internal to you that motivate you. And so trying to work on each of those pieces can help a person to develop motivation and a belief that they can make the improvement that they need to do. And so I think there's some strategies that work, and I've kind of worked on developing those with different leaders over the years.
Okay, thank you. So as a board superintendent team, it's our responsibility to articulate a clear message, clear mission and vision for our district. How would you go about carrying out the board's vision and mission? And how do you go about inserting your own ideas to the board?
So, I mean, I've read the vision and mission for the school district, and that's one of the things that attracted me to the school district. It's got a very, it's got a future orientation to it, looking at what our students will look like as they get out of school, both in careers and as citizens of our country. It also is very focused on all kids, and I think that's really important because that's who we serve, everybody. So those are things, I probably wouldn't have applied for this job if I didn't feel like I was, my values were in line with the vision and mission as it stated by the school district. That said, that, because, is there a question about strategic plan later? Should I?
No.
Okay, so, I mean, I, I think the vision and mission or lived out the strategic plan, right? So in looking at that, I mean, there are, I think, seven different areas there. Most of them are focused on students, and then we've got some staffing, community elements there as well. So that document describes how we live out our vision and mission. And I applaud the fact that that strategic plan has specific measurable results. A lot of times, that's a piece that we miss, and so there's that crosswalk document that goes with it. So I think that there are some measurable targets there. I reviewed it and it's something that I feel like as superintendent, I can definitely support. But I also think that strategic plans, I read an article, this is probably twenty years ago, called, you know, how the strategic plan is the death of an organization. And what it was talking about is an organization makes a strategic plan, sits on a shelf, and it never gets referred to, utilized, and it doesn't get lived in the organization. And so I think that if we have a strategic plan, we need to reference it often. I noticed on the board agendas, it talks about the different things on the agenda and how they tie to the strategic plan. Good stuff, right? So it tells me that it's not just a document sitting on a shelf or something on a wall, but it's something that we're living and breathing every day as we do our work together, both between the board and superintendent, but I'm presuming within the organization. So that's exciting to me. I think also, I don't think that the, I mean, you don't very often change your vision and mission because it's an ongoing driving goal. But the strategic plan can change from time to time, and I think that there are times where there's a place for that. In looking at the strategic plan, obviously something I can support and partner with the board and the community, the district, along with the staff. I do think there might be some areas where I might suggest refinement on it. I think there are a couple of areas where the metrics are very limited. For example, unemployment, well-being with regards to safety. Yeah, there, I mean, there's a piece in there about how many accidents happen and workers' complaints and things like that. But I think there's way more to employees feeling safe in a school district than that. So there might be something we could use to enhance that. And then, by the way, I want to know about the volunteer thing. I'll ask, I'll find out more about that later. But like, the volunteer number increased drastically. I'm very curious about that. But I think there are other ways to measure community engagement than that. And so that might be something we have conversation about moving forward. But I think that the vision and mission are lived out through the strategic plan. And that strategic plan is the piece that might get adjusted from time to time through dialogue between the superintendent and the school board and the community and stakeholders. I think they're key partners in it because the board and the superintendent don't do all the work to make it happen. It's the teachers, the parent educators, the bus drivers, custodians, et cetera, who make that happen, and our families.
We're just tracking on time, so as we've seen across the state and even in neighboring districts, many are in a financial crisis due to poor leadership, mismanagement, or a combination of a wide variety of issues. What specific strategies would you employ to ensure responsible management of our resources in order to ensure the continued support of our community? And with that, can you share an example of a successful bond or levy that you've led or worked on?
Sure. So I want to ask, you were tracking the clock. Are we, are we doing okay?
Yep, we're good.
All right, just want to make sure. So a couple of different things. So in Washington State with the McCleary decision back in, I think it was two thousand and eleven, I actually went to the McCleary, I went to the Supreme Court hearing on McCleary, which was interesting. My school district was only twenty miles away, so I went and I actually sat in the room and listened to them. But you can see the back of my bald head, right, on the TV cameras. So, I mean, that was, that was a hallmark case in the state of Washington regarding school funding. However, it appears, and I'm watching from across the river, right, in Oregon, but it appears we're in the same situation we were in two thousand and ten. And I think what happened was, well, first, they developed the prototypical school plan, right? And the prototypical school plan doesn't describe any real school in the state of Washington. No school has a .02 psychologist. Counselors are not fully funded. School nurses are not fully funded. Parent educators are not fully funded. Transportation's not fully funded. Special education is not fully funded. And so when that came out, there was an increase in cash, the districts, but the actual model didn't really substantially change. And so we're finding ourselves again in the state of Washington, short-changed on each of those things. So I, I'm thinking there probably is going to be some sort of movement across the state because there are districts drowning all over the place, some in our, one of the state of Washington as well. So I guess I'll say, number one, when the additional resources came into school districts back in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, a lot of the money was bargained away. And I don't blame teachers for negotiating hard, and they were partners on the McCleary case and put money into that and blood, sweat, and tears into making that Supreme Court case come to life. But I think that there were different motivations regarding the McCleary case from the different parties. I think school district administrators, I was one of them at the time, wanted to be made whole because we were being short-changed by the state on different things and having to depend on levy money for that. I think that the teachers were like, we want a living wage and we want fair salaries given whatever increasing costs for us to live, especially in the Seattle area, not as much out here. But, you know, it costs a pretty lot to live out here. Look at the housing values. So I don't blame people for that. I don't blame the collective bargaining process for it, but the money's all been put up in salaries. When we were doing three percent raises and four percent raises in Oregon and Florida, you were doing double-digit raises in Washington back then. And so we're back in the same situation. Additionally, the levy situation is exactly the same as it was when I left Washington in two thousand and thirteen. Nothing has changed. Levis were supposed to go away and we were supposed to be fully funded. And they did, all they did is they changed the name of the levy. I think they call it enrichment levy now, which no district is being enriched by that levy. It's still an MNO levy, right? And we use it to meet basic unfunded things from the state and the federal government. So that said, to get to the question on the management of it, it's about enrollment, right? I mean, enrollment drives all of your resources in a school district in the state of Washington. And so if you're not doing a very careful job of projecting enrollment and adjusting your staffing, because staffing is your biggest expense, to adapt for the enrollment that you have, you're going to be in trouble. And in the converse, if you are keeping your And in the converse, if you are keeping your staffing levels and your expenses in line with your enrollment, you're going to be okay. So, I mean, it's pretty simple, really. And, you know, and I, I'm in a district that has declining enrollment right now. We've had to reduce teachers because we have less kids and less classes. And people aren't happy about losing teachers that they love. Luckily, we've been able to do it through attrition, fortunately. But, you know, the, when there's three English teachers and all of a sudden there's two, they feel like that's an increase in workload, but we also have less kids, right? So you have to be, be willing to make those adjustments and those decisions regarding staffing in order to stay in line with that. Now, if you're doing that in incremental stages through attrition, it doesn't become a crisis in your organization, you're not riffing staff and all that kind of thing. But if you're not keeping an eye on it, you can, you can get into big trouble pretty quickly. So with, with that, the, so the strategy for responsible management is, is basically make sure that we're adjusting our staffing and expenses to be in line with that. I, I should have mentioned MSOCs as well. That's also something that they funded at one point in time, but it hasn't been increasing at the rate of inflation. So that's another pressure that we have as an organization. Bus fuel costs more now, the electricity costs more, so it's another piece. So with regards to bonds and levies, so in, in Oregon, we don't have to pass levies every four years. And so, and my community, because of the tax base, cannot support a local levy. It's just impossible in our community. There are local option levies available. They're typically done in Portland and in large suburban districts in Oregon. They, they aren't done in rural districts. People can't afford it. That said, well, and I, and I should say, Oregon doesn't have levies, but we just get 20% less money than you all do. So in, in the end, we don't even have the option to get that money. Where you, you have an every-four-year levy available. I have been, when I was back in Washington, I, I was involved in multiple levy campaigns in school districts. It's, it's important that the community know what the levy supports and what's not funded by the state, that that information is transparent, not as a threat to what's going to be cut, but just as reality about what, what that funds and what is valuable for. Additionally, I, I think that even though the verbiage has changed, it's a replacement of an existing tax. And I think a lot of people get that confused with a bond and don't understand that it's, it's just replacing what, what your taxes are already doing. So I think those are some strategies with regards to levies. The other thing, because it's a perpetual cycle in Washington where you have to pass it every four years and then you're also, you have, you have bonds every few years and you're trying to layer those on top of each other. I, I think that it's important that your, your campaign group, your, your community advocacy group that's separate from the school district, but that, that community needs to not die and need to be resuscitated every four years. It needs to be, even in a non-election year, that group ought to be meeting a couple of times, planning, strategizing, maybe doing some raising of some funds in order to support campaigns so that you can keep the momentum going with regards to having that be perpetual and ongoing and, and have your community behind that. So that, that's something we didn't still, we'll come in, it's something that we did when I was in Evans and Shoreline as well. So with that, though, bonds are a different animal. So you asked for a specific situation. In 2001, Napa School District passed a construction capital bond. 67.4%, you only need 50% to pass them in Oregon. I know you need 60 here. But, you know, we, you know, during my off time, because nobody there had run a bond for 25 years. Nobody had any institutional knowledge about that. So I did have to train some community volunteers on kind of what that looks like. So a successful bond campaign, the first thing you listen to your community, right? So I know, I've read the capital facilities plan for Kennewick and I, I'm familiar with the capital priorities in the district for a bond. But you, you also need to listen to your community. So the first thing we did in Napa is we did a survey of our community. We talked to every person in the community through our survey. Now, it's a smaller community than this, so that's, that's realistic. But it, it's doable in a community like this as well. We did that in Evans when we were trying to pass a bond. And so you survey everybody in the community about, you, you float the ideas out there that you're thinking about and you get feedback on, do they seem to have strong community support or don't they? Which you also test the messaging through that and you, you, you test priorities. And so by listening to your community as a whole, you get valuable feedback that feeds your bond campaign. So there are some things that you decide not to do. There are some things that you decide are a high priority because they sell. So for example, in Napa, and it's not totally core mission, but it's important. They, the community wanted a new gym, right? And they were, the high school had a pretty dilapidated gym from the 1950s. The middle school didn't even have a gym and they were in a bunch of portables. So, but the community, you know, 58% of people in our community said that was their top priority. A new middle school was another priority. And so what, what we started to do is layer on these different pieces that we knew were important to people. Sorry to say, but fire alarm, fire sprinklers were not popular, right? Now, the fire chiefs thought they were popular. But our, our school is in a rural part of the county where fire sprinklers weren't code when the building was built. We have no fire sprinklers and we have a wood frame building. So the fire chief wanted that, but it, it wasn't something popular with the community, probably because you can't see, touch, feel it, right? So we, but safety was important, so we, we couched it around safety. We did put in some fire sprinklers. But, but it was the messaging of it, based on our survey, that helped us to, to do that. So you, you've got to be strategic in your actual campaign. Your volunteers need to make sure that they're identifying your strong school supporters early, your yes voters, and make sure that they vote. So it's reminders to vote, reminders to get out there and, and join the polls. You also find out through your survey, at, at the initial phase there, who's less likely to support you. And to be honest, you don't market much to the no voters. That, that's the strategy, right? And I've been involved in a bond where we built two high schools, actually a high school and two middle schools in Evans. We rebuilt both of our high schools in Shoreline with a bond that I was involved in. We just passed this bond in Napa, we just finished the project. And I watched the kids two nights ago in the new gym play basketball, a lot of fun. And, and the middle school was beautiful and the kids are just loving it. So those are, those are strategies that you use. And we, actually our polling told us that we probably were going to be 50% support on the bond. But they also knew through the questioning that we could increase support through a good communication campaign. And so we developed the campaign and we, and we moved, we moved the needle up to 67. So it, it was a great community effort and we're really proud of it.
Great, thank you. So we've, we've got about nine questions in a little over 20 minutes.
Got it, okay.
Go ahead, bring it. Our mic, sorry.
I was about to say the same thing, so it's good. Oftentimes, or question seven, oftentimes our state passes legislation that does not align with our community values. A superintendent, what strategies would you use to ensure compliance with the state laws? While also finding ways to, to reflect the community values within the framework of those laws?
I live this every day in Oregon. I'm in a rural community out on the coast. Our community doesn't jive in a lot of ways with the values in Salem. And so I, I, I think there's a couple of different things. One is you try to, before things happen, you try to exert some legislative influence. You communicate with legislators about the impacts and the perception within the district that's not, I mean, around here aside by Core, the Pretty Little Things and stuff, right? Olympia, Seattle, what have you. But you, you communicate with your legislators and try to see if they can exert some influence in a proactive way. That said, sometimes things happen and there are times where you communicate with, in, in the state of the OSPI, where you communicate with your legislators to see if a change could be made in that policy. So sometimes it's, it might be a board resolution to address it. So I know this board has done a few resolutions of that type where there was something where the values didn't align. My board back during COVID passed a resolution regarding local control. You know, every, everybody in Salem was telling us when kids could be back at school. Our school district had kids back in school fall of 2020 because our teachers wanted to do it, wanted to be back with the kids and we knew we could do it safely. And we did. But then the state came around and said, no, you can't get your middle schoolers back in school till mid-year. And they had this weird thing where the younger kids could get in, high school kids could get in, but the middle schoolers couldn't. And so we, you know, advocated for that in our district. And so there are times where you have to go out there and you have to advocate for those things that aren't aligned with your values. Now, the superintendent is not a politician, we're not elected. Our primary job is to lead student achievement, right, in our school district. So that should be first and foremost what we're doing. Where there are barriers for that, we do need to communicate that. Where there are barriers to funding that supports that, we need to communicate that as well. But there are, there are times where we do need to communicate when something doesn't align and try to create a change and create alliances as well. So there are other districts in the state that probably agree with us and we need to kind of build some of those bridges with them for advocacy. Thank you. By the way, we will comply with the law.
Yeah.
So I, I want to be, I mean, there are some school districts and even some school boards have told their superintendent, don't comply with the law, I'm going to comply with the law.
So it seems that we're in a constant state of change and improvement. Tell us about your experience in leading change. What do you consider to be the key factors in effectively leading change that results in positive outcomes for students? And what do you see as your role in this regard if you are selected as the superintendent?
You're asking these multi-step questions, I've got two minutes, so I'll, I'll try to be efficient here. So in, in each organization where I've come, there's been a need for change. Although I will say, and this gets to the latter part of the question, I'm not going to come in and start making changes right away. I want to get to know the lay of the land, get to know the people, get to know the culture, learn what's working and, and value that, because you don't want to change something that people are valuing and is already working. So you want to, you want to take some time in your entry plan to listen, learn, try to figure out what the lay of the land is. So that, that's key. And in each of the roles I've had, that's been the approach that I've taken. So when I became the superintendent in, in Napa, there were a, a few things that needed some change. We needed to step up our student achievement. We were not performing well. We had two schools in, I'm forgetting the word for it now. They were in trouble with the state because they weren't achieving, the name will come today. But anyway, we had two schools that were in trouble that way, and so we needed to step up our achievement. So the, the first thing we did, we, we couldn't have been performing as poorly as we were if our instruction was aligned with the standards. Because the misalignment, you're, you're going to miss the mark pretty, pretty far. So targeted intervention, that's, that's the name, I knew it would come to me. So basically, we, we sought out to do curriculum mapping and make sure that every standard that was in the state standards that was being measured was actually taught within our school. And so that alignment helped. And then we started to work on instruction. And so during COVID, it was an opportunity because professional developers were a dime a dozen because they didn't have any work. And so we had our kids back in school. So I contacted Boise State University, where they have a math institute over there. And I had math coaches coming into my school district, working on math improvement. And the teachers were really enjoying it. We did embedded professional development with them. They started to see some different ways to go about reaching kids in math. It's a different models. And our district, now that's back to measuring that, are what they call gap scores, that's growth scores for kids on the aggregate in our school system. In literacy, for the last three years, they've been the top 10% in the state of Oregon. And in mathematics, for two of those years, it was, it was in the top 10%. This last year, we're in the top quarter of districts in the state of Oregon in mathematics in, in grades K through eight. They don't really measure it at 11th grade because there's like a gap there between the eighth grade scores and the 11th grade scores. But in the growth metric, which is, in, in my mind, what's most important because you just got to always be growing. Proficiency comes with that, but you, you got to be improving on the growth. So through, taking advantage of an opportunity that existed then and then collaborating with the principals and the staff, we were able to really make a dent in student achievement and the work continues. I had replicated that here. So, I mean, I, I'd listen, learn and try to figure out where the leverage points are and then try to, you know, help students achieve.
Can you share an example of an innovative or novel approach you took to improving student outcomes that failed or did not work? Why did you think it failed? What did you do?
Haven't had many of these failure experiences in student achievement, so. I can, I can talk about one that I was sort of involved in in an ancillary way. So I, I don't know if, and I, I apologize, I haven't researched how long any of you have been on the board. So if you've been on the board a long time, you might recall this. So when the Gates Foundation was giving out Gates Foundation grants, they gave out some, they gave out a lot of grants. Actually, you know what? I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to shift up here. So back in 2013, there was a lot of focus on the teacher evaluation systems and how that would change student achievement. And so there were new teacher evaluation systems developed. And I was in Florida at the time, and so they also added a student achievement metric to that. They called it value-added model where if the students in your classroom grew more than the average teacher in the state, you were given extra credit on your evaluation for that. And if your children grew less than the average teacher in the state, you had a lower evaluation score and 50% of your evaluation was based on the student achievement results and 50% was based on your principal observations, based on, we use the Marzano system there. But it could be the Tennyson system or the 5D, or I think the U7D in Washington, but any of those things. And so I was the HR guy there and we needed to implement this stuff and it was a mandate from the state. And so we mandated that and put it in place and I didn't make one bit of dent in student achievement. And, and I think the, the major premise there was that the teacher is the problem. And I'm not sure, I mean, sometimes the teacher may be the problem, but in most cases, the teacher's well-intended, they're working really hard, they're doing their best and, and they're trying to improve every day. And so I think, I think that approach to that, I was sort of forced to implement it. And I, I can't say that I didn't agree with it at the time. But, but looking in hindsight, the, the system of education is so much more complex than just the teacher. It's the curriculum, it's assessment, it's feedback, it's some of the underpinnings to learning that affect children with regards to nutrition and mental health support and things like that. And so to, to think that just evaluating the teacher differently and punishing them or rewarding them as if they're, as if most teachers need to be motivated, I think that was misguided. So I'll, I'll put that one out there. I mean, it was something we were forced to do, I went along with it, right? And, and thought it would help. But, and the Gates Foundation eventually abandoned their initiatives on that because they saw it didn't make a dent in learning nationwide.
Okay, how do you decide which tasks to delegate versus those which you handle personally as a superintendent? And how do you ensure the delegation does not result in losing accountability?
So in that, in this case, I, well, as a superintendent, you work through other people. You, especially in a district of this size. So I, you know, I'm not, I'm not out there teaching kids, I'm not out there leading teachers. I'm, I'm guiding our district leaders in order to guide what's happening within their schools. So I, I think that the, the first part about it is you need to look at how each segment of the organization is performing. So the individual schools, you look at how the schools are performing. You look at how the different levels, so like the elementary, the middle, the high schools are performing in the aggregate. You look at how the different operational functions of the district are performing. You know, what are things looking like with our, with our school buses? What are things looking like in food service? Or the kids enjoying the meals, you know, all that kind of thing. And so when you look at all those different elements of the school district, some of them are working fine, right? And so you don't take a hand, totally hands-off approach, but you, you keep coaching, you keep supporting the leaders where things are moving in the right direction. You don't mess with it too much because they're kind of being entrepreneurs and making it happen. In cases where it's not getting done, then you go back to that skill and mill piece where you try to identify, okay, so it isn't working very well here. Let's have a conversation and try to do some diagnostics regarding what might be making it so that it isn't working. And then you try to use some levers with regards to that to make it work. Now, I will say, if you discover a person doesn't have the skills and doesn't have any motivation, we need to have them move on. And unfortunately, that's rare that you have somebody that's in that situation. But it, it happens occasionally and you need to be willing to have the courage to address it that way. Now, sometimes there is another role within the organization that they might be more able to do and more proficient at. And we obviously need to look at those out of respect for them and their family and that sort of thing. But, you know, more often than not, more often than not, people are getting the stuff done and we just need to, you know, kind of coach them and keep moving them along. But sometimes you need to get in there a little bit deeper with that.
Five questions left. Five left in 10 minutes, so we're, we're tracking.
Just to one pace.
Can you share with us your philosophy on student discipline? And what strategies would you employ to reduce disruptive behaviors or, and help improve student conduct?
So, and this is part of the strategic plan in Kennewick that I noticed. Engaged kids tend not to misbehave. So if our educational program, it's now, and I'm a math teacher, so we teach one of the subjects that a lot of kids view as boring, but in math class, we're excited. But still, we, we need to engage our kids. So engagement happens when learning is creative, useful or emotional. And I'm a, I'm a big proponent of the work by Philip Schlechtie. He wrote a book back in the early 2000s called Working on the Work. And so he talked about the tasks that we put before kids, what we ask them to do and how they motivate kids. And so he has nine different elements that we try to put into learning tasks that make them more motivating for kids. When I was a middle school principal in Evans, Washington, we as a school, I, I made, I made it a goal for every teacher to choose two things that they were not that good at yet out of those strategies. And then try to grow in those areas during the upcoming year and work on developing tasks for students that were more engaging. Our discipline referrals dropped within the next two years because the kids were that much more engaged in the learning that they were doing in our school. That wasn't the only reason we wanted to do it. We just wanted to engage kids. The other cool thing was the staff wanted kids to be engaged, but it was more because they want them to listen to the teacher. That was sort of the motivation of the teacher. But as we shifted toward, okay, what is our role in being engaging rather than just expecting kids to be engaged? That whole thing turned on its head. So I, I think that's not the whole thing, right? Because there are a lot of other elements to that, but it's a key thing. And the more we can have engaging instruction that aligns with the standards and is rigorous, the better. So that, that's number one. So we take a responsibility in student discipline to make sure we're not triggering kids. So some kids get triggered by the things that we do. We need to be able to look in the mirror and see if we're the cause of some of the things that are going on, whether that be as an individual or as a, as a system. So we need, we need to be cognizant and thoughtful of that. We do need to have adequate support services for our kids, whether that be counselors, mental health therapists, things like that. And have, have teachers who are good at the affective world too, who can connect with kids and create meaningful relationships with them. A lot of times, if the kids have a meaningful relationship with a teacher, they don't misbehave for them. So I, I think all those are elements to be proactive on that. I mean, obviously, when, when kids have severe misbehavior, there have to be consequences for that in light of their code of conduct. I mean, those are things that we, we need to do. And yet, and we used to do this when I was a high school assistant principal. We also wanted to be able to, for example, if a student was excluded from school, you know, suspension, something like that. We also wanted to do a re-entry conference with them and their family to make sure when they came back to school that we had a path for future success with that, with that family, with that kid. So being able to figure out, well, A, are there some additional needs that we could meet in order to help avoid this sort of thing happening again? And then additionally, are there some supports we can provide? So I think those are some things that, that can help with the student management piece.
Thank you. So time-wise, we are right up against it. We have one, two, three, four more questions left, so.
Okay.
Might have to go pretty quick through these. We strive for political neutrality in our classroom as, as politics and personal, personal ideological views do not belong. How do you ensure that our schools and curriculum remain focused on academic standards and not personal ideologies or beliefs? Probably a minute per question, I think.
Okay. I think I already spoke to this in a previous question, that our jobs can be neutral. Teach kids to think strategically and let them know there's multiple points of view on a thing. And then really encourage the families to overcome those issues.
Kennewick School District is one of, if not the first in the state to provide both armed school resource and safety officers on all of our campuses. How would you approach ensuring physical safety of both students and staff in a district of our size while still fostering a positive and welcoming environment?
So I, I don't view having police officers in school as antagonistic toward kids. I've worked in schools that had an SRO in them. And the SROs actually developed connections with our kids. Oftentimes, our kids trusted them and would let them know what was going on within our school. So I think it's about the law enforcement agents, especially developing, having proper training and then making sure that they are connecting with kids in a, in a proactive way where the kids trust them and are willing to talk to them about things that are going on in the school that are problematic. So that can be addressed in a, in a proactive rather than reactive way. So, you know, I, I, and I think that, I, I don't think that's a size district issue. I, I think you can do that in a small district or a large district. You know, I, I've worked specifically with the resource officers and security monitors in Shoreline, which is a kind of a medium-sized district. We had about 9,000 students and, I mean, you just kind of double the effort in a district this size, right? So.
What is your philosophy on collective bargaining and its role in fostering a positive relationship between the district and the union? Can you share an example of a successful collective bargaining experience you led or were involved in?
So between being a superintendent and HR person, I've probably done 40 bargains now with different groups. They, they always focus on listening to one another, hearing the interests behind the proposals and trying to come to common ground on that. An example of that would be when I first got to Napa, we, we got a proposal regarding insurance allocations. In, in Washington, the state established an insurance allocation for the teachers. In Oregon, it's bargained by the different districts, so it varies from district to district. And we got a proposal that was very high from the association. And in collaborating and listening to the interests, we decided that a group HRA would be an appropriate way to basically buy down the premiums on the insurance and give them actually a better insurance plan on the aggregate for a lower cost. And so we didn't need to put as much money into the allocation. So we got the better insurance for a lower cost and we didn't need to increase the premiums, which, which met the interest of the district in not expending more money.
Perfect. Okay, last one. As you know, ESTR funds were one-time funds provided by the government or by Congress to address the educational impact during COVID-19. Can you share with us how your district prioritized and allocated ESTR funds?
Yes. So we did, I, I know Kennewick basically used them to bridge the levy. You know, when the levy didn't pass, that, that money was used to basically fill in the gap for that, which is brilliant. I, I will say, we did something, I don't want to say it's brilliant because that would be arrogant, but I knew as a superintendent, I have enough experience to know, you can't spend one-time funds on recurring costs, right? And we knew that was one-time funds. So we, we bought a lot of HVAC systems. All of our HVAC systems were failed in our school district. So now the Napa School District has brand-new, high filtration, efficient HVAC systems. And I got some Energy Trust money from Oregon on top of that in order to support that, that effort. And so we, we basically knew we had some capital expenditures we needed to do and we were allowed to spend it on that. And so we spent it on something that was a one-time cost that will have perpetual impact and didn't spend it on people.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. We know the process is not easy and the application takes a while and all this stuff takes time. So we truly appreciate you being here tonight and want to just thank you. And that's it, we're wrapped up.
Well, thank you to each of you and thank you to the community for being here and the, the Kennewick team. So I look forward to the possibility of working together. Thank you.
Hi.
We'll get someone to fix it. Lot of tripping hazards.
Feels like a hearing, right? Testifying. I see some people in front of Congress, I'm not sure how this is.
Yeah. Raise your right hand. All right.
Yeah.
Well, good evening Lance, thanks for being here tonight. We, we truly appreciate it. The board set aside the next 45 to 50 minutes to conduct this interview. Board members will take turns asking you a wide variety of questions and we'll just do roundtable down the line here. I've asked board members to hold any follow-up questions until we complete the interview. And if time allows, they'll be afforded to ask those follow-up questions. First, we'll just quickly go through introductions up here. And then we'll ask you to take a few minutes to tell us about yourself, any highlights of your professional career. And then what specifically about Kennewick School District made you apply for this position? So I'll start with introductions. Gabe Galbraith, Board President.
Micah Valentine, the Vice President.
I'm Brittany Glenn Hill and I'm the Legislative Representative.
I'm Josh Miller. I did want to let you know I am on call tonight with my occupation. So if I look at my cell phone or have to step out for a minute, I do apologize.
Okay, fair enough.
And I'm Michael Connors.
Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you.
Is it my turn?
Your turn.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for being here. Thank you for the board, for the service that you do. Being in education for over 33 years, I know the value and the importance of participation from the community. So again, thank you for that. A little bit about myself and why I'm applying, is that the question?
Yep, absolutely.
So just, last time I interviewed with the board, it was a four-hour thing, so I'm going to be as brief as I can just because we were setting the groundwork for what we wanted for our school district. A little bit about myself, 33 years in education. I started as a teacher. I taught for 15 years. I was also coached many things, my kid stuff. I was a varsity basketball coach, varsity football coach. I did that type of thing. Actually, kind of got into teaching because that's the path that I wanted to go. My leadership opportunities in, in teaching vary from our Teachers Association, being the president of that, being on many leadership panels, being our curriculum director of mathematics. It was kind of a stipend in the district that I was in. And I looked at, at scope sequence and the math assignments at the high school. Fast forward to leadership opportunities in administration, all of my leadership has been in Lewiston School District. Started as an assistant principal at Sacagawea Middle School, assistant principal at Lewiston High School, principal at Lewiston High School, assistant superintendent for eight years at Lewiston School District and currently four years as the superintendent. Highlights, okay, I'll, Mike has said throw this out. So most recently, I was a nominator, I'm the 2015, no, not wrong, wrong decade. About 2025, that tells you, Idaho Superintendent of the Year, pretty excited about that. I get the opportunity to represent our state in New Orleans after Mardi Gras and the Super Bowl. So hopefully the city will tame, tame itself a little bit by the time I get there. Pretty excited about that, but most importantly, I'm really proud of what we've done in the Lewiston School District. Not only just recently, but over the tenure there. We were fortunate enough to build a brand-new high school and career technical school after failing three bonds. And I was a part of that team to bring that to fruition in 2017. Passed with 75%. In Idaho, you have to have a supermajority, 66.23% in order to get a bond election. Pretty excited about that and the opportunities that that brought to our, our community. And we have only reaped the benefit of that multiple times over in everything. For example, right now, we have 1,000 music students in our valley because we're hosting Idaho State Music Festival. That doesn't happen and it's the first time it's been co-located in conjunction with the University of Idaho in one spot. Normally, they have to spread it all out. So that was one example. Businesses are starting to relocate in our valley because of that particular school and what we were able to offer them. I'm a part of Valley Vision, which is a recruitment agency that helps bring businesses to the valley. I take them through our high school. I've taken thousands of people through our high school, our Career Technical Center. One of them, Forrest Light, who just recently said, said one of the main reasons they chose Lewiston was because of the educational opportunities that were offered, not only to their employees, but will offer to their kids that they brought. And I'm trying to talk, one of their children live in Stevensville, Montana. I'm like, hey, come on over. So we're trying to do those things. So there's some big pieces. Most recently, in our, however, in the bond, we did not have athletic facilities. We excluded those. And currently, I've led a campaign, a capital campaign as well as to finish those projects. We've raised over $8 million locally for that particular project. And I'm happy to say that by the time I'm done, whatever that looks like, everything will be under contract. So we'll have our, this will be the first time in the history of that district where all of our venues will be co-located. And what an amazing opportunity for our kids to just walk out to the football stadium, which might not be something that's a big deal because if you had that. But our kids had to go off-campus for everything that they did other than basketball and our, and volleyball. So that's, that's kind of a big deal. Mike Kennewick, my good friend Thana Knowlton, we were on the phone. And he says, he says, hey, the Kennewick job's open. You might want to take a look at that. He says, I think it's a good fit for you and the things that, the values that you have and the values of the Kennewick community. And I, and I said, okay, so I got Bill's number and we start talking. He's an old Lewiston High School grad, so he has an opportunity to kind of give me a little feel for this community and the parallels that we have. Thought it was a great fit. I'm at a spot in my career where I'm looking to expand my opportunities and to bring the things that we have done in Lewiston to basically a larger audience. We have about 5,000 students. You got about 20, it's three, three of us, and I'm excited about that. That's probably enough. I know I've got 45 minutes, I'm not putting anybody's sleep back there. Okay, here we go.
Great, thank you.
There's a lot. You guys added all of my, my stuff. It's all there.
All right, so we'll start with the first question here.
You bet.
What do you think is the most important quality of a leader and describe for us your leadership style that you would bring to our district?
My leadership style is I'm a servant leader. And what I mean by that is I believe that my obligation is to provide the supports and opportunities for our leaders who are in the buildings to make it happen. I make sure that when we make big, big decisions, that it's a very collaborative effort. Collaboration is co-laboring. We work together. We create teams. Teams have three, three components that make teams. That is that they have to have a common vision of what they're going to do. They have to have common goals. So we, my job, even when I was coaching, my goal was to ensure that we are all looking, what I call, through the same lens. So that means we understand the objectives and we understand the components of the objectives. They have to have mutual accountability. We have to be, have to rely on each other and we have to know our roles. And most importantly, we have to know that there's an interdependence between us. In other words, all of our actions have an impact of others. So that's kind of the teams that I've built. I believe that I'm a visionary in, in that I look at things not only for what they are, but what they could be. I don't focus on the things that they are not, if that makes sense. So I try and find the positive things and build upon those. I look for powerful practice. I look for repeatable things that bring results, most specifically in academic areas. So I guess the big picture is I want to create a foundation and put people in positions where they can be the most successful in all aspects, principals, teachers, cabinet members. I want to make sure that they have all the tools necessary to ensure the success. Because ultimately, we're all here for the same reason as that, as our children. Our parents send them to us. The most valuable thing that they have, they deliver to us. And we're going to make sure that we provide that back to them. So I need to make sure that the closer we get to the child, that's where it all happens and I provide the support for that.
Thank you.
I need my timer, three minutes, I was practicing.
Yeah, you're good. Thank you Lance. Is it okay if we call you Lance?
Sure.
The state has.
As long as you don't use all names, that my mom's watching.
We will not do that.
Probably in trouble.
We have a word. The state recently passed the Parents' Bill of Rights Initiative. What is your philosophy on parental rights in education? What is the purview of school and what is the purview of the home?
Well, in my state, we have the same bill that came through. Let me just make this very simple. The parents are partners, period. That's a motto we use in the Lewiston School District. We know that parents have a role in the success of their children. I want to make sure that we share that. We, our parent bill of rights include many aspects. For example, notification aspects, our parent bill of rights for, in our state, I'm assuming it's similar. They have to, 50% of all of our committees have to have parents on it. And those are all good things. There are multiple reasons for that. We need our parents to be our partners in many ways because they need to help to tell the story of the successes that we have in our schools. So that we go for levies or bonds and when we ask our community for the support, we need to have multiple advocates. We do little things like, at our board meetings, our schools present at every one of our board meetings. And we do that not to put more work on our staff. In fact, I don't even let the staff talk. Our kids give the presentation. So we'll have our children come in like our kindergartners and they'll teach you how they're learning, whatever it is. Learning how to read, learning math fluency. We also go, and I know that we, Tracy and Dr. Pierce talked about that. We went to our most recent. We went to our most recent board meeting, it was at an elementary gym. And we were learning how our PE was helping in math fluency. So we're running around trying not to get hit by noodles and picking up multiplication cards and sending them back. So our board members are doing that. There are a couple of reasons that we do those things. One, we get parents in our board, in our board meetings, and they start to understand. And our board understands there's a connection with them. So our parents are our partners. I don't get caught up in things when it comes to our parents, that they hold true and have values for them. I understand what our role is as educators. Our role is to find those things that create and, and lead us toward the mission and vision of the Kennewick School District, which is to ensure that our kids are prepared for post-secondary or life, and then the third one, career. There we go, right? So parents have a role, they're our partners, they walk along with us.
Okay, tell us what you've done to foster a positive and collaborative work culture among teachers, administrators, and support staff in your current district? And then is there anything that you would do differently as the superintendent of Kennewick Schools?
Well, a positive work culture, culture is extremely important. You know, culture and climate completely trump competence in, in all things. You got to have people who have a com, you know, going back to that team aspect, that have a common lens, that have a common purpose, and you have to value them. So the things that we do in the Lewiston School District, we do tons of things. We celebrate all kinds of things. We have our, our support staff, for example, we have ESP of the Year. I was Assistant Superintendent, I led that, where we have nominations that come in, and we celebrate them. We have our, of course, our Teachers of the Year and other pieces like that. What I do personally, I'm in a lot of classrooms. I go to, I, I have office hours at our, at our buildings, for example, where I get the opportunity to speak to our teachers. They, I know them all by name, whether it's better different, I know we got twenty-five hundred, so my name bank's going to increase, we have about a thousand. Also, the board staff, I say hi to everybody. My favorite people are the cooks, right? Because when I was in elementary school, I worked in the lunchroom, so I could get two macaroni cheeses and two cinnamon rolls. That was my big deal, right? That was important to me, so I got to serve that stuff. So cooks are my jam. I, with our food and nutrition, we do a Christmas party. And I get the guitar out and we do basically a sing-along. So I get it out and away we go. I give them a little packet and we're doing all the, I know that I have to do groundwork, yeah, Ranover by Ranger, that's one of the favorites. So that's one of the things we do. I make sure that I'm in, I make sure that I'm with the bus drivers, I'm with our maintenance folks. At the end of the day, I want to make sure that they're all seen as people and they all contribute to the success of our students. At the, at the, at the principal level, we work, we do a ton, well, obviously, we meet frequently, that's, that's my team. My team's about twenty-two total with everybody in. And we do a ton of stuff together. And the one thing that I allow them to do is have a voice with the things that we do. And then the last one, I'm sorry, I can read all this, I think I got principals. We just do it, we do a ton of things to ensure that we celebrate the successes of all of our staff members and they all feel valued in the school district, and they all know that they contribute. All of the messages that I send out to the staff are the Lewiston School District team, and that's everyone.
Accountability at all levels is critical in the role of superintendent. Can you share a time when you had to hold district or school leaders accountable for underperforming student outcomes or failure to implement district policies or initiatives?
Yes. Accountability is a part, is one of the, we're accountable to each other when we're on a team. And in the, in the event that we're not, when we're underperforming, unfortunately, yes. I mean, short answer, I, I've had to let principals go, because it wasn't working. And that was not easy, the person was a friend. But that's the obligation I had was to the children in that elementary. So we had to make an adjustment. That's, that's kind of a simple one, you know, severing, that's, there are other things, though. Accountability doesn't necessarily mean letting people go, accountability also means building them up. And the most important thing there is making sure that there's a clear lens for the expectations. Because if you're talking, well, a perfect example right now is we're going through an ELA curriculum adoption, K-5. Everyone smiles, that's fun. And we are, our principals, we, I had, we had to get together because we were not there. We just, we weren't there. And the more that we talked, the more that we realized that we were talking about the same, we were using the same words, but they had different meanings. So my obligation is to make sure that each of them are accountable to ensuring that we're getting the best resources for our board to make the decision in front of our community, so that our parents know that we have the best thing for our children. And our parents are involved with that first, but we have to kind of have our stuff in a line before we get in front of parents. That doesn't work, right? So we had to have a very frank discussion about what the expectations were and what they brought to that, that piece. So, you know, I've had to let people go, basically, I've had to coach people up. So account, holding people accountable is not an issue with me.
As a board superintendent team, it's our responsibility to articulate a clear mission and vision for our district. How would you go about carrying out the board's vision and mission? And how do you go about inserting your own ideas into that?
Okay, thank you for that. The, the mission of a school district or a mission of an organization answers the question of why we exist. It's your fundamental anchor. Everything that you have falls back to that. So in the Kennewick School District, if we're making sure that our kids are going to be successful in life, post-secondary, or whatever they choose to do when they leave us, then that's, all of our decisions, that becomes our anchor. Our vision answers the question, what must we become in order to accomplish the mission? So if, in yours, it talks about safe environments. Safe environments mean that our children are free from the outside pieces that get in the way of, for them to learn. So I live that every day in our school district, I live that here. There are other components that go into that, you know, you get a strategic plan, I'm sure that's coming up pretty soon. But that becomes your beacon. So your mission, vision is your foundation and your anchor. That's your, that's where you go. Now, how do I insert myself into that? I make sure that it's clear what we do, that everyone knows that. We start every meeting that I have with the vision and mission of the school district, every meeting. When we meet with community groups, we recite it. When we, when we meet with our leadership team, we recite it. Everywhere we go, I want to make sure, because if they can't say what it is, you don't have one. And what I do, workshops on this, by the way, I've done leadership workshops. I'll ask people, what's your mission, vision? If they have to look down, they, they don't have one. The first question in our PLC journey, when we are establishing mission visions at our elementaries and our high schools, my first question with my principal, what's your mission, vision? If they pause or don't, they look down, to have to look it up, they don't have one. So it has to be dynamic, it has to be lived. So my insertion of that, my, how I insert myself into that is to make sure that it's, it's, it's a living piece. I know that you all have worked hard to establish this. Our mission and vision was rebranded, we had the same one in the Lewiston School District since nineteen ninety-four. It was strive, achieve, succeed, go beyond. It was words that came about when the school district consolidated. It was some, there were about two hundred people in the room, and they were trying to figure out, you know, what this looks like and feels like when two districts come together, which is better when they deconsolidate, which is a divorce, right? So when I was talking to the superintendent about what that meant and felt like for her, she said, this codified us. We needed something to bind us. When I became the superintendent and I looked at the expectations that we have when it came to academic achievement, I didn't hear anything about kids in there. Strive, achieve, succeed, go beyond became a motto. To me, it wasn't a found, it didn't answer the question, why in eighteen eighty, ten years before statehood, did they create a charter in Lewiston School District? And I didn't believe that that was it. Now it changed, so we had forty-two people in a row with our community to establish our mission, vision. I believe that was the same process here. So that's probably a lot, and I got, how am I doing on time? When I hear the chime, Gabe, just let me know, okay? Ding! Okay, all right. How many jurors do I got online, where's my guy? All right.
All right, so as we see across this state, they were in the crisis, plenty of reasons. Plus, specific strategies would- Ploy to ensure the responsible management of our resources in order to ensure the continued support from our community. Second piece to that is describe a time you had a successful bond or levy, which you talked about at the beginning, but if you want to highlight that too again real quick, you can.
Sure. Don't spend one-time money on residual costs, there you go. You know, you just, you, there, school, school district budgets come down to, we are a business. I look at myself, like, for example, as a CEO of a business that has a budget, three hundred eighty million, whatever it is. My obligation is to ensure that we, we kind of stay in business. Our customers are our parents, they choose to send their children to us. So I got to make sure that things are working there. Most school district budgets are people, though, right? Like eighty-eight percent, eighty, you know, whatever that number is. So the discretionary part of it ends up being fairly small. So you got to really manage the resources embedded into the framework that you have established, whether that's if you have specific guidelines for class size, et cetera. So you have to be wise about that. Sometimes it's a moving target, like, for example, in our school district, all of a sudden, I had seventy fewer kinders show up. That didn't work for us, because that's our lifeblood, right? So that kind of made us rethink how we did resources. And it's not always fun, but you, you have to make sure that you're managing that, the people thing, because people have contracts. So it's not like you can just go, hey, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna all of a sudden downsize. Doesn't work that way. So you make sure that you don't commit one-time dollars to residual. Where a lot of school districts got into trouble was COVID funds, I mean, just call it what it is. What we did in the Lewiston School District is I put dollars into, in, I, those dollars went into things that I felt would help us on the infrastructure side. So I tacked a lot of our environmental types of things, RTUs, et cetera. We also built equity into our staff that we were able to continue with our supplemental levy. So that was what I was kind of banking on. So when you come to local resources, you got to make sure that your community understands the, the why behind it and what the need is. So when we go into, for example, a supplemental levy, or anytime you go to the voters, you have to make sure you have a message that's clear and understandable. Because those two things, if they're not, end up being no's, right? And, and in your world, depending on which levy threshold you're in, for example, in the bond levy that we ran, one no, cancel, two yeses. So with that being said, with supplemental levies, we put it in three categories. It's a support, it's an opportunity, or it's safety. Everyone can understand those three things. So opportunities for our kids, what does that look like? For us, it's career technical education, that's one, for example. We have a, a career technical building, and I know you have a skill center that is housed here. We have one that has seventeen different pathways, that have eleven different programs. You will not see another school district in the state of Idaho that has that particular opportunity for their children. We have a high manufacturing community, so it's in alignment with the value and expectations that they have. And it was one of the reasons we were successful with the bond. So that would be an example of an opportunity. What do supports look like? Supports look like making sure that we have the appropriate number of instructors, we have appropriate number of technology, class size. And then safety goes to our SROs, our School Resource Officers. It went into, we, I redid all of the vestibules into our elementaries for controlled access, for example. It also goes into counselors, like, we have smaller elementaries, and we have one counselor in every one of our elementaries. And you're like, well, so it's small, well, one of them's like two hundred and fifty people. That's a pretty expensive resource, but we felt that was essential to the success of our, of what our kids needed. So that's what we do in, in that particular regard. So you got to take, you know, back to answer your question. Financially, make sure you don't commit dollars that aren't going to be there, that's one. Two, make sure that you're in alignment with the personnel re-allocation pieces. And then three, make sure that you have your community support, so that they can do the things the state's obligated to do for us, right? To backfill.
Okay. We're on question number seven, you want to?
No, I just-
Make sure everybody's good?
I got a lot of typing going on out there. I fell back in my masters, everyone's-
They're hanging on every word.
Yeah, that's all right. I know you guys are making the decision, but I know you're getting in.
We are, we are. All that input, we agree, we digest, it's great stuff. We're definitely partners with the community. Oftentimes, our state, state passes legislation that is not aligned with our community's values. A superintendent, what strategies would you use to ensure compliance with the state laws while also finding ways to reflect the community's values within the framework of those laws?
Okay, let's see, where do I start?
Tough question.
No, no, yeah, I'm just relaying, I was talking to Bill on the way in, so on the way over, I got a call from, let me back up. So what, the short answer is what we do is we make sure we are telling our story to the people who represent us, period. I mean, that's, that, I have six, we have, in our legislative district, we have two senators, or, I'm, I'm split between District Six and Seven. So we have two senators and two representatives in each one, so. And my obligation, and I owe this to our community, our school board, and our parents, is to make sure that when they go to Boise, so in this case, when they go to Olympia, that they see our faces. They know who they represent. And that's, that's, sometimes it's hard, because they get into some political alignment, there's other pieces that go there. So I have open conversations, we have a plan and a message that we, we send. I have their cellphone numbers, I text them on the floor before votes. I, the phone call that I got this morning, on the way over, as a matter of fact, was the assistant directors working with the Senate Education Chair, and he wanted to know from us, actually, and this is a good thing. He said, okay, bring us a bill that's going to help classroom behavior. Magic pill, right, okay, thank you. All right, I'm like, well, okay, let's think about that one for a second. I wish I had the words, but when, in doing that, though, just the fact that I've developed that relationship where we can do that, that's a benefit for our school district, and that would be something that I, that I would do here. So how do you do that? Will you make sure that you're, you're doing everything that you can to let them know who we are? Look, everything that I read in your legislative plan is exactly what we're fighting, local control, right? Like, you are all elected to. So when we meet with legislators and we sit down, I try and have our board members talk, because you're talking to the peer, in my opinion, right? You're elected in a nonpartisan way to represent this community. They're elected to do that as well. But I think sometimes, I found in our state, that our, they don't want the feds involved in their world, but they sure like to insert themselves in local. We kind of try to remind them of that. So big picture, communicate, advocate, pray, no. Just make sure that you are in alignment, because you are, I have a responsibility to carry out the directives of the board of directors. That, that's who I work for, and the community. Because again, we have to be in alignment. You go back to like resources, if you're, you missed, if you missed that mark, that impacts kids, and that's why we're here. I got a lot of legislative stories, you want to, sorry. I know we only got four, but I'm trying to get to the next round, we talk all day, there we go.
So it seems that we're in a constant state of change and improvement. So tell us about your experience in leading change. What do you consider to be the key factors in effectively leading change that results in positive outcomes for students? And then what do you see as your role in this regard if you were selected as the next superintendent?
Change is constant in life, right? That's the one thing that we can count on is change. Leading change is, is about being an effective communicator. You, again, have to build a vision for what that looks like, and that includes your mission, vision. And you start attacking those things or putting pieces together that get you the how. Like, it's easy to set goals, for example, that's the easiest thing you'll do is write down a goal. It's what you got to do to accomplish that goal. So for, for us, for example, we're in our fourth year of what I would call our PLC journey. Now, we have dabbled, dipped our toe into professional learning communities previously. As a principal at the high school, we did it. We thought we were doing a pretty good job when we met in our departments, and we talked about common finals that we would never, really came to fruition. Short answer, that's not the case now. But I talked to the board when I became the superintendent, I said, in order to get us to where we want to be, we're going to have uncomfortable conversations, and it won't be easy. We have to ride- be easy. We have to ride that. So, that being said, in order to lead that change, you have to put structures in place, again, for people to be successful. And I'm very proud of what our school district has done in those four years. Uh, most recently, in our early childhood literacy, for example, and by the way, that when I became the superintendent, all, all eggs went there. Our children have to reach by grade three. That opens and unlocks the doors for all the other opportunities we put together for them. So early childhood literacy was a big thing for me. So we invested in, or we have, uh, through Dr. Carol, Carol Disson from the University of Oregon, in fact, we're involved in a case study right now from Boston University. Anyway, long story short, is we put everything in early childhood. However, what we learned is that it's not a program that does anything, it's who. So we put our eggs into our, to our PLC leads, and our goal is to build strong teams, teacher teams, to lead the PLC process. And that's easier said than done. Most people in the PLC process get stuck in question one, the what. And we just spin like the what. So we, I required in our first, the first year, everyone had to get through a complete cycle. Because I had to push them to the spot where they understood questions two and three. How do we know how we're going to respond both to those who don't and those who do? And we had to get there. So those are some things that, that we have done, and it wasn't easy. Because there are people that have to give to get in life. Sometimes, especially our instructors who maybe have more experience, and I'll be honest with you, the ones that had the hardest time working in teams were those who got excellent results by themselves. It was hard. It really was. In fact, we had some hard conversations, and I said, you have an obligation to the profession to share your talents and bring some up with you. So that, that's kind of, I mean, I got a ton of stuff on that, but that's, that's an example. That, that's not, it's easier to say, you know, to answer the fourth question, that's easy to do. In, in reality, find the time for teachers to meet, we worked on that, had to create some schedule changes. But I, we've, we've done it. I mean, like, our highest achieving schools, elementary, in our school districts are two poverty schools. So we know it's making a difference. Uh, we have, uh, we're the second highest in, by point two, Post Falls beat us, I'm going after them, uh, as far as large school districts in the state in K3 reading. So it's paid off. We're doing the right things. But not because, um, like any particular program is believed. It's we. And it was kinder to board. So if you want to know, you know, what's my job? Is connect kinder to the board. Everyone's in alignment. And that set the tone for us, and we're, we're just piling ahead. Much so that, just another award that we have, one of our elementaries was most recently recognized as a model PLC school, and that's a nation, uh, national award, and that's the first and only in the state of Idaho. We have two other elementaries that are in the queue, and our district's in the queue. So that, that tells me that we've got the right people doing the right stuff. And I'm just lucky to be there.
Uh, can you share an example of an innovative or novel approach you took to improving student outcomes that failed or did not work? Why do you think it failed? And what did you do?
We don't fail, we just don't get there yet. And what I mean by that is, uh, if we have a practice that's not getting the results, we look at a different practice. I don't, I don't get caught up in failure. I just, that's not part of who I am. Uh, we're just not there yet. You know, that's kind of duacs work. And that's the mindset that I want. We have things that have been unsuccessful. I just, when, when we, I want, I want those who are working in the field as leaders to be innovative, to be visionaries, and I want them to try, and I want them to feel that, hmm, we're not there yet. Because, and I need to support them in that. But I need them to also recognize that if it's not working, we're not going to keep doing it. So I guess that's the, the best way for me to, to say that. Have we been perfect in our approach? We have not. Back to, you know, like accountability, I had to make a change because it wasn't working. But we recognized it and we moved on. And now that particular school is just completely rebounded, and culture's completely different. I don't hear, when I, as superintendent, when you don't hear about a school, things are typically going well. So they were, they went off my radar.
Okay, how do you decide which tasks to delegate versus those you handle personally? As a superintendent, how do you ensure that the delegation does not result in losing accountability?
It's a great question. Because that's a lesson, that's something that I had to learn as I, um, became more seasoned. Delegation to me is about, uh, there's kind of two leadership styles that's been studied recently, you know, like command and control, and trust and inspire, I'm kind of on that side, the trust and inspire side. There are things that need to be delegated. And those things, I have to be able to trust those people who are under that responsibility to, to do, you know, accomplish those things in their role. But the accountability, that relieves me. As the leader of the school district, this is the face that goes in front of the camera. And I don't get to say, well, someone else, that was someone else's job. I don't do that. So how do you do that? You make sure that you're in constant communication with your reports. You have, uh, good meetings that have all the checks and balances embedded in them. So when I meet, for example, with my directors, I meet with them personally once a week, we have our agendas and everything that they cover under their area. And we also meet collectively, so I'm meeting individually and collectively with those who kind of are my direct reports. You expand that to the district, or, you know, to the, um, to the principal level. I have quarterly visits with all of our schools, where the teachers get the opportunity to come in and meet with me. I know that might look a little different here, but regardless, the point is I'm going to be accessible, and they're going to see me. So I, the buck stops here. However, I need to be able to make sure that I give people responsibilities so they can grow in their capacity. Part of my role, and part of our role as professionals, to build others up in their role, and be future. Because regardless of who's in this seat, there's going to be somebody different here in five, 10 years, or whatever the case might be. Yeah.
And we're tracking just fine on time, so.
Oh, thank you, get, I'm getting nervous, I saw the clock, I'm wondering.
What is your philosophy around student discipline? What strategies would you use to help reduce disruptive behaviors and potentially improve student conduct in our district?
There's no such, uh, student discipline. Student behaviors have become, uh, nationally, I believe, a topic that has really, um, forced us to dig in and start to figure out what, kind of what's going on. I, I'm, for lack of better words. Student discipline, uh, I, regard, we have guidelines and things that, that will, uh, go along with student discipline. The board will have policy, we'll have handbooks, etc. For me, discipline, or student behaviors, we have to be better teachers when it comes to student behavior. You know, one of the greatest quotes, like, you know, if students struggles in reading, we teach. If students struggles in math, we teach. And if students in trouble, like behaviorally, we like, we don't spend that much time there. So I'll just tell you some things that we're doing. How's that? Because behaviors have been on my role radar with our Teachers Association, every year, negotiations, it comes up every year. Um, and we, we just keep peeling that onion. So I'll just do kind of a brief one. Uh, being ready for school, we'll start there. So we have found more, in fact, this year it kind of came to a crescendo, that we're having more and more students not ready for school. You know, like, how can they not be ready for school? It's kindergarten. Well, what they don't, uh, we're having, uh, a difficult time for them to be resilient in doing non-preferred activities. How's that? Okay? Because that's what it came down to. In life, you have preferred activities and you have non-preferred activities. So those behaviors are created when you're asking them to do a non-preferred activity, right? So non-preferred activity in the kinders is like, I need you to come with carpet, I need you to not, you know, to keep your hands to yourself. Because those are things that can inhibit learning. So, um, this is what happened. I was summoned, that's not true. We had, the stories kept coming, and I had some students on our radar. Um, I went and observed a kindergarten classroom and what I believe is one of our very top kinder instructors. And she says, Lance, I believe that my classroom is two to three months behind where we normally would be at this time. I had to listen to that. Not because of what she said, but because of who she was. And I could see it. Because I've been in that classroom, in this particular building. And by the way, this is the model PLC building, right? So, like, I walk down the hall, it's click, 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 click. I'm like, okay, so we got to do something different. We just can't sit there and mire the problem. So anyway, so what we did is I, I, I found an amazing person who actually was in Royal City, who came back to Lewiston. Uh, we're watching her little daughter, Avaline, in my, uh, in our daycare, anyway. And I said, Angie, I need your help. So we hired her, and we put together transitional kindergarten. This transitional kindergarten was not to me a destination for any children. It was to be a thoroughfare, where they start to learn to mirror their preferred activity behavior in non-preferred activity times. So what we did is I reduced their, we're a full-day kindergarten, or all-day kindergarten. We reduced their day back to half-day. But I ensured that those children in a small group setting still got the things that they preferred. Breakfast, recess, specials, and lunch. So what we did is we took those four things, or those behaviors, and we tried to support those. And by the way, we're a K-12 PBIS, uh, school system. So it's positive, positive, positive. And you try and give, and, and it, it has been a game changer for not only those students who were removed, and we had about 12 district-wide, it's all scaled, right? And when I walked into that classroom, completely different classroom. So it was a win-win. Now, our goal for those kids is that they're with their peers. In fact, if they get to a spot, we want them back in. And what they're doing in transitional K is a reduced section of their gear in the classroom. So that person is team teaching in essence, just in a different setting, in a smaller setting. So that's just one example how it went to, that we, uh, attacked behaviors. Uh, holding people accountable in life is part of a learning lesson, you know? In life, you get, you can choose your actions, we don't get to choose the consequence of them. I mean, that's just the way that that is. And as adults, it's important that we teach that. You know, we have to make sure that we are modeling that, and that we teach that with our stones. And unfortunately, the older the kids get, maybe the more severe those maybe behaviors become, and the impact maybe becomes greater. But that's the way life is, you know? When we make choices as adults that aren't great, that's, that can be pretty long-term. So our goal is to make sure that our kids are learning, big picture. Behaviors is something that we are seeing, um, and I describe them like this. I believe 100% in our professionals. Like, our teachers know and have great skills, all, everywhere. What I'm finding is, is we're having greater, more severe disruptive behaviors than we've had before. Like, I, you know, you have a little first grader that's giving you the French hello, um, and, uh, you know, that's just, you're, you're kind of wondering where that's coming from. So I said, we need to visit, we're, we're going to talk about this a little bit. But, or they'll come after you, they're tossing classrooms. This is stuff that, you know, five, 10 years ago, we didn't have. So we need, we need to address that. And I, I don't have the answer. I mean, like I said, the chairman just said, hey, what are we going to do with that? I'll have the answer, but I can tell you, we're not going to just admire it. And we're going to find different ways to find something that's going to work. Because regardless of all that, those children need to be protective too. All kids means all kids.
Alright, we are on to question number 12. We strive to maintain political neutrality in our classrooms as, as politics or personal ideological views do not belong. How do you ensure that our schools and curriculum remain focused on academic standards and not personal ideologies or beliefs?
Well, like I said, yeah, that's, that's a partnership with you have with your community. Uh, our curriculum, um, selection committee is required to have 50% of our parents on it. Our obligation in school is to provide our students with breadth. Breath as in, they need to be exposed to things. They need to learn about the world. They don't need to be told what their beliefs are, right? Like, um, so when you, and that, that kind of gets into a, not necessarily a final, I don't believe it's a final, like, we need to learn about world religions. We're in a world that has multiple ideas and concepts. Our students need to be, uh, able to understand information that comes to them in droves, right? Like, and it's all skews and slants. So how do we create critical thinkers? Like, that's essential. How do we get people to understand what's, like, fake news, news, uh, half-truths, whatever, how do you characterize that? Do you get all your information from one source? So that's kind of, you know, at the, the learning, like, I don't know, four, five, six on, we're so focused on getting to read, so I get caught up in that. When they get older, that's where I think sometimes you, there's, because they're going to bring beliefs and values to the classroom as well. And those beliefs and values may differ. Uh, I always say this, you know, you have 19,008, 19,018 as of September, whatever, in the school district. That's how many families, families and beliefs that you bring into your schools every day. Our obligation is not to tell them, you know, kind of what they're doing in their house. Our job is to make sure that we're providing that environment, so that they can be successful in the mission and vision. Curriculum, resources, you work with your community to ensure that. And it's well communicated. I mean, it needs to be communicated throughout. Because our teachers live in the community too. I mean, they're people. And there's going to be a variance of belief there. Um, we're going to have, I don't know, a school bus driver that might have an opinion, you know, and then you've got social media and all this other stuff that kind of gets, gets everybody excited about that. So, short answer is you, you, you work with your community there. That's the obligation. One of the obligations of you all is to select curriculum. That's your, that's your role. Our responsibility is to ensure that you have the best information so that you can make that choice and meet the needs of our students.
Kenwick School District is one of, if not the first in the state, to provide both armed school resource and safety officers on all of our campuses. How would you approach ensuring physical safety of both students and staff in a district of our size while still fostering a positive and welcoming environment?
So we, um, we have resource officers in our, our middle schools, high schools that are housed there. Um, they bring ARs and put them in the safe. Um, we have, uh, but we do that in collaboration with our community. So I'm excited to know that you have that. Because, again, our obligation is to provide safety for our children, physical safety. I mean, that's just like minimum. Like, that, that has to happen regardless of anything else. How do you do that? You make sure that you're in cahoots with the, you know, the county sheriffs. You make sure that you know what's going on fire. You make sure you know what's going on with the, the Kenwick Police Department. Uh, we meet annually, we put together our plans, our safety protocol plans. I'll give you an example of something that happened, just to tell you the relationship that we currently have, and that I would expect to have, is where we had shots fired, called 911, that went out from our high school. Within two minutes, we had the FBI, state police, county, and chair, uh, the LPD onsite. Now, it ended up being a backfire from our dust collector, but still, right, okay? It's okay, it's alright. I can tell you, everybody's heart was beating a little faster. And by the way, the drill was amazing. Like, our kids, boom. But it was a different feeling when you were walking on that campus. And of course, it was a brand-new high school, right? And so we had a ton of CMU in our walking, I mean, it really exposed some things for us that we got much better at. Uh, but you, you, you got to work together. Anybody who's injured, that's just, that would be the nightmare for everyone. Controlled access points, we've, we've worked ton on that. So perimeter safety, uh, we have state and safety inspector that does a ton of work with us. And we've applied for safety grants, that does a lot of our perimeter pieces. I mean, there's just all tons of aspects that go to that. Because ultimately, again, we want to make sure that everyone's secure. At the same time, we don't want to build walls around everything. So what's the balance between that? Coordination, having safety people. I know that I talked to Dr. Pierce about what that looks like and how that's attached to your, to your levy. I'd be 100% in favor of that. And we've, we've written grants for additional SROs. We put one in our alternative school. Uh, it's been really, because it's in the county, so we didn't have LPD for that. So something that we have. And I have great, great relationship with, uh, yeah. Play basketball in the morning with like the cops, so we're safe. Hospice, if anybody goes down, we're good there. A dentist, um, so anybody's teeth gets hurt, so that's my morning.
What is your philosophy on collective bargaining and its role in fostering a positive What is your philosophy on collective bargaining and its role in fostering a positive relationship between the district and the union? Can you share an example of a successful collective bargaining experience you led or were involved in?
Yes, every year. We use interest-based bargaining, I was training interest-based bargaining in 1999, actually on the teacher's side, so teachers, I was our, our president. I've been the lead negotiator on both sides. So, at the end of the day, that's an opportunity for us to find the, to codify our relationship. When you have ongoing conversations about your professional staff or all your staff, and they're bringing things to your attention, that you can work collectively to find a resolution that's win-win, you're there. And you do that through dialogue. And that's that whole interest-based bargaining model. You need to be able to tell the story, you have your information, so that everyone sees it through the same lens. I can tell you that we've had times when, I'll say this, the most successful bargaining sessions are ones where everyone leaves happy, right? Like, and no one feels like they were taken advantage of on either side, and it's a win-win. We've, we typically do, you know, we'll have our set of agreements that we'll do, we also have MOUs that allows us to be a little flexible. So, because you're, in bargaining, and maybe not so much in our, this state, because the, the salary piece, but on our side, everything's, all the salary funds all set by the board. So, and we're kind of a moving target on the funds that are coming in. And we kind of got to trust each other on what that looks like and feels like. And when you get done in two days, that's pretty awesome, right? I know it's a year, I'm, I'm ready, I'm getting ready. But that's not, that's not uncommon, the idea is that you're going to have continued, continued dialogue, and it's essential. I know that in districts and where labor relations aren't good, it impacts the reason we're here as kids. I want our teachers and our staff to be focused on what's most important every day and not like, hey, what's going on with our contract and all these other things? We got to have a good relationship to get the results that we expect.
Okay, so as you know, ESER funds were one-time funds provided by Congress to address the educational impacts through COVID-19. Can you share with us how your district prioritized and allocated its ESER funds?
I'd be happy to. How much time do I have now? I know we're getting close, I, I talked about that already. We positioned, we had, you know, it's relatively, again, I, I looked at some infrastructure things first to see if I could utilize and assist. We have like 400 RTUs, for example. And so, we took a look and replaced those. I looked at some envelope things as well as building capacity that would pay us forward. And we did that in our, what we call our PLC leads. And I put additional, I created through, with our ESER funds, equity in every one of our elementaries. I've told you how successful we've been there, like, 80% of our students, 79, but approximately almost 80% of grades K three are reading at grade level right now. If you take out other students with disabilities, it's 86%. Our students with disabilities, it's 40%, in some cases, 50%. We're pretty proud of that. So our PLC leads was one of those ESER pieces that we folded in. And then our evaluation was results, and if it was, it was, if we're getting results, we kept them up with that. But we didn't get into some crazy stuff, and, and so we're, we're good. I know that others aren't, I, I'm aware of that. I know Pullman, for example, some other school districts around us, got themselves into a spot that, that you have to kind of dig yourself out of. So, I've been pretty happy, I mean, Auntie Esther was nice for a while, and so we're, we're going away from her.
Thank you.
The cabinet made that up, I didn't make that up. The business manager, we'd, we'd always ask him, is there Auntie Esther funds for that, yes or no?
Great. Well, thank you so much, Lance.
That's it?
We're, we're running up on time, so we're, we're going to let you, let you get out of here. We appreciate your, your effort in this process and, and coming and, and sharing with us and the whole thing. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the observation panel and the community for coming out and helping us as well. We, we truly value your feedback as well, and so, we have no other business authorized by law, and so the board will now move into executive session for superintendent applicant evaluation. Thank you, everyone.
Can I say thank you to everybody, is that okay?
You're on, you're on your time.
You haven't taken a vote yet to go into executive session. First of all, I want to thank everyone again for coming, I know you got probably tons of things to do. I'm very honored to share our story and I hope I get the opportunity to talk more.